Call to order. The North Andover Planning Board meeting December 20th, 2022, our last meeting of the year. Pursuant to Chapter 107 of the Acts 2002, this meeting of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted in person and via remote means in accordance with applicable law. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with a right or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, in-person attendance of members of the public and board members will be permitted. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting live may do so. And this also, I'm sorry, this also applies to our public hearings, or public hearings as well as the meeting in its entirety will be both remote and in person. Anyone who wants to watch may do so on the television by tuning to Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26 or online at www.northandovercam.org. Every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town and North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record proceeding as soon as possible after the meeting or after the public hearing. If members of public would like to participate in any public hearings but not attend the meeting in person, please email your questions or comments to, prior to or during the meeting, or during the hearing, to geneenrigth@northandoverma.gov. Again, if you want to participate in a public hearing but not be here in person, jeenrigth@northandoverma.gov. This question or comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly. Gene, could you take role, please?
Sure. Alyssa Konig?
Here.
Sean Kevlin?
Here.
Eitan Goldberg?
I am here.
John Simons?
Here.
Peter Boyton?
Here.
Kelly Cormier?
Here.
And Kelly is attending remotely.
Okay. Gene, we have a new staff member that you'd like to introduce?
We do. So Brian Keating joined our staff yesterday, and so it's a second night he's attending remotely. Brian comes from the city of Methuen, has a lot of experience in the planning field. He'll primarily be working on short and long-term planning initiatives, so our master plan, our housing production plan, a lot of grants, the trail work we've been initiating. So I just wanted to welcome Brian and introduce everybody.
Welcome, Brian.
Welcome, Brian.
Welcome.
Hi. It's good to meet everybody.
All right. Okay. A&R Plan, 169 Chestnut Street. Applicant proposes to subdivide, well, not subdivide, proposes to divide existing parcels into four lots.
Okay, so this is, let me just cast it here, hold on.
Right. It's not a subdivision, that's why it's A&R.
It's an A&R plan.
So we should say divide.
So the proposed lots comply with frontage, lot area, and contiguous buildable area. The original subdivision plan endorsed in 1979 showed three lots for the same land area. The applicant is proposing to raise the existing barn and in-ground swimming pool to create four buildable lots, one of which contains the existing dwelling unit. And so originally during the subdivision approval, the barn was not proposed to be raised, and that's why it was three as opposed to four. But again, everything complies with dimensional requirements. The one thing I will note is these are contiguous parcels. Disturbance may very well be over an acre, and if that's the case, it may trigger a land disturbance permit. But until we know the actual disturbance area, we don't know that answer.
Okay. And for anyone who's just interested in A&R Plan, meaning approval not required, the Planning Board is asked to decide whether or not a division of land requires subdivision. And if we find that it does not, then we approve the plan. We have to find that there is appropriate, there's a certain amount of frontage as well as access to the property. And so, Gene, we're good with our frontage on public roads and as well as our access?
Yes. So access will be either via Quail Run or Chestnut Street.
Okay. And all the parcels created meet the requirements of zoning?
Yes.
Okay. Can you introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about what you're planning here?
Good evening. Ben Osgood, Ranger Engineering Group, here for the owner, Mr. Cahill. Essentially, it was, as Gene said, it was originally three lots. Larger lot contained the barn and the house. It was combined into, or made into, one lot after it was subdivided. Somebody obviously purchased the whole property, but it recently sold, and the new owner wants to divide it into four parcels. The barn is in a state of high disrepair. It's ready to fall down. It's dangerous, and it needs to come down. So that will be removed, which allows the property to be divided in four lots. As she said, it's got frontage and area, and just four 25,000 square foot lots. The lot with the house is about 38,000 square feet, and that's where the owner of the property is going to live.
So, might I ask you, Ben, any idea what the plans are for the four lots?
Honestly, he doesn't know what he's going to do with it. He's going to, he lives in the house, obviously, talks, you know, he's creating three lots. He's in no hurry to, you know, sell them all off, but they will be built on.
Gene, what's the zoning here?
Residential three.
Okay, so it's R3, okay. So, R3 zoning. Okay.
Gee, I had a couple questions, sir. Can you show me the four? I'm having trouble figuring out where all four are.
Okay, so this lower right-hand corner?
Oh, that's one.
That's one. It has an in-ground pool that will be raised. Directly behind that is Lot C, and that faces Quail Run. The existing house fronts on Chestnut Street, and then behind the existing house, you see the barn straddles those two property lines.
Okay, I see, okay.
So again, Lot D will front on Quail Run.
And a house is very old, right? It's early 19th century, right?
It is. Yeah, it's an old house.
Yeah. And the barn, what does the barn date to?
I don't know, but there is a demolition delay on the barn.
That was sort of my next question.
Yep.
And, I mean, you said it's in deplorable shape. How deplorable is it? I mean, is it salvageable in the way, you know, I mean, after all, we moved another building yesterday, so...
Yeah, I mean, it's got holes in the roof. It's got temporary support. It's in really bad shape. I mean, I haven't been in it. He won't allow anybody to go in it, but it's...
Right. I mean, it's, is it, you know, like the barn from Dr. Brokus's house?
No.
It's not?
Way beyond that.
Okay.
Way beyond that.
The assessing card lists the house as being built in 1720.
Oh.
Seventeen twenty's on the assessing card for the house.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions?
Actually, I have one. So, there's a proposed conservation easement. I can't see where that actually begins and ends.
So, if you look at just below the barn, plan south, about 10 feet below the barn, there's an iron pipe set. There's a line goes over to the, heads to the left, which was east, to the lot corner there. That's the edge of the easement. And then on Lot C, which is the bottom left, there's a line kind of cutting the back of that. So that's there to preserve, there are some big trees there, and he wants to preserve those, some, you know, huge maple trees. And it's kind of behind the yard for the house, so he just wants to leave that as an area of no build, no, you know, preserve the landscape there.
Got it. And the conservation easement is in Lot C?
It's on Lot C, and...
Lot one?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it would just be for the benefit of, you know, the owners of the properties. It's not like anything that would be conveyed to anybody.
Does there anything that's built to meet the setbacks of the zoning? Okay, so for an A&R, really, I mean, you're good.
It looks like somebody would like to speak if you entertain it.
Okay, so you can come up and speak. I'll just say that it's not a public hearing, so we're not necessarily going to go through...
Question.
Yeah, yep.
I was going to ask, is there any, so I don't know if you're ready for that one?
Go ahead, come on up, come on up.
Just for the sir.
You're going to go up to the microphone right there, see, at the podium? Just introduce yourself.
Stan Fong, my wife Shirley Fong. We live on 11 Montero Way, just a block away, so we actually drive by this property every day. And so I understand the space was originally designed for three lots. The proposal is making four. So one of the questions that we have is really, all the houses we have, we have been living there for 22 years. So the property, they're all to a certain size, so as a result, when they appreciate, they appreciate together, the value is similar, $100,000 to $100,000 range. So the question that, one of the first questions that I have is, when you break them into four lots into three, that means each lot will be smaller. If they come up with a new property, will there be smaller homes or even townhomes? That will change the landscape of the region, because it's all single-family home. The last one we wanted to have multi-home properties together into this small space, which affect our value, just the first questions.
So, I don't have an answer for that. I can tell you two things. One, it's not something we can actually consider in what's before us today.
I understand.
What they're asking is we're just a division of the property, and we're not really allowed to look at what may be, only whether it meets the actual rules for division of property, which it does. They are going to be limited by the zoning, which is R3, so it has to be, what's the minimum lot area?
At least 25,000 square feet.
Right.
And every other lot interior to Quail Run, so within the loop, are all 25,004, 25,003, and on the perimeter, same thing, between 25 and 29,000 square feet.
And they'll have to have the same setbacks, meaning how far the houses have to be from each other and from the neighbors. So all the requirements for, that are the same in the neighborhood, will have to be met.
It's a single-family zone, too.
It's also a zone.
No townhomes, no duplexes, single-family.
Right. So they have to meet that. Unless the zoning, unless the zoning changes by the time they build, and they can build, once it's approved, they can build tomorrow, or they can build in 100 years, but as long as the zoning is the same, they're limited to whatever.
Just to clarify, since I'm not involved in this every day, so I understand the policy and regulations. So under the current zoning regulations, any property that were built on each one of the four lots will be single-family home of certain spec sizes, you described earlier, ladies.
That was allowed by zoning, so...
And so if the developer or the owner want to come back and change the zoning requirements to create multifamily homes, or street corner stores to sell liquor, for example, they have to come back to the city planning office to...
That would have, no, that would actually have to go to town meeting and be a voted town meeting for a zoning change.
Okay. Well, because it's a town meeting, so there'll be more than...
Yeah, that's difficult.
It would come here on the way for a recommendation to town meeting, but town meeting is the authority to vote it.
Yeah, that would be a significant effort.
So at least from our angle as an owner, who's close by for 20-plus years, and all of the neighbors are getting older together, and so we can feel comfortable that if anything will be built, there'll be at least certain spec similar to our homes at this juncture, unless it's rezoned.
Correct. Unless there's some sort of, unless there's, unless there's an application for a variance of some sort, which, I mean, and we can't predict every possible outcome, but you're pretty, you're pretty well protected by zoning. Obviously, if there was something that they wanted to do outside of zoning that didn't match, then they'd have to either seek a variance or seek, which means going to a zoning board of appeals and having hearings and things like that, right? If they wanted to go outside the setbacks by a certain amount, you'd have to get a variance. That's at the zoning board of appeals. You'd get, all neighbors would get notice and things like that. If they wanted to change the zoning, they'd have to go through a whole nother process. So as it's currently zoned and within the rules, you're pretty well protected. Is that fair?
Yeah, that being said, I mean, but if they choose to build ranches, no one has any say whether they want to do a ranch or a cape versus a garrison. I mean, it's, they just have to comply with zoning.
It could be pink, it could be purple, it could be ugly, it could be beautiful. We don't have choices on that. But as of now, it's got to be a single-family home. Good?
I have another question.
Sure.
Hi, Heather Abers, LA 38 Montero Way. What are the regulations around having civil engineers look at the, sort of, the slope? Because at the bottom of Quail Run and Montero Way, there's a lot of drainage issues, and water runs down into our properties, and a lot of us have dry wells and have French drain systems. Is that something that this committee could consider, or are there rules in place for that?
So we can consider it for what we're doing today.
Okay.
If there's a land disturbance permit, right? So if they, if they are required to get what's called a land disturbance permit because they're doing more than an acre, then they would come back here, and then that would be something that we could consider at that point for the part of that permit.
Stormwater regs.
With stormwater and stuff like that. If they're building smaller and not that much, then through the building inspector...
Yeah, I mean, you still can't discharge, you can't let them run off of your property. So the DPW has engineers, and if that were the case, you certainly could reach out to them.
So I would have to reach out to them versus the person who's building?
You would probably be the one that would notice it or be the one that was affected.
The one that's building, I'm probably not going to go to the engineer to say, I have, I've caused a runoff issue. We have building inspectors and we have town engineers.
So once the houses are built and we have runoff issues at the bottom of Quail Run and Montero Way, then we go? That doesn't...
Well, it's, I mean, again, so we're doing an A&R today.
Yep.
So that's, so we're going to vote on that.
If they require additional permits, then they'd come back for, for land disturbance,
and then they'd come back here and we could address at that point.
Sure.
If they don't require those permits, then they just need to get building permits, and then it's...
So it's really their goodwill?
Well, it's, you can speak to the building, you can speak to them as they're doing it, you can speak to the building commissioner, I mean, but there aren't, other than the building permit, if they're building under a certain amount of land and within zoning, there's not really any other, there's not process, so...
But you can raise your question to the building inspector tomorrow, I mean, well ahead of the project, to see what his procedures are.
Okay. And then he would keep an eye on that, or...
You have to talk to him.
Because, I mean, just remember, like I said, they could, they could build tomorrow, or they could build in 50 years.
Right.
So nobody's, until someone actually pulls a permit, there's not...
It's hard to say.
It's not much to do in terms of process, because we don't know when they're going to build.
Sure. Okay.
Okay? It's good questions, we just don't have answers for every question. Okay. All right, so let's vote on the A&R. So seems to meet all the criteria, can get a motion to approve the A&R and instruct the planning director to sign the necessary forms.
Motion.
Motion made. Can we get a second?
Second.
Second, and all in favor? Alyssa?
Yes.
All vote yes? John?
Yes.
Peter?
I.
Kelly?
Yes.
Okay. A&R is...
Kelly's vote's remote.
Kelly's vote is remote. The A&R is approved, and you can talk with Gene about filing all the appropriate ILRs and documentations and all that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for our neighbors who came and spoke and asked questions. Feel free to stay or feel free to go. All right. Zero Turnpike, continued public hearings, and these will be both, as I stated earlier, these will be both in-person and remote. Zero Turnpike Street continued until January 3rd, 2023. 1701 Osgood Street continued until January 3rd, 2023. 104 Bonnie Lane, Patrick Gaffney, application for a watershed special permit.
Okay, so the applicant has responded to the second peer review letter. An additional tree to be removed has been added to the plan. The total number of trees to be removed is six, and all stumps outside the limit of work will remain and not be excavated. Smaller shrubs and bushes within the limit of work will also be removed as part of the proposed project. The peer reviewer suggests that the board condition, the 350-square-foot renaturalization area inside the 25-foot no disturbance zones, that's a conservation zone, not to be mowed or maintained. The area will be reseeded with conservation and seed mix. The area is currently landscape beds and does not contain any invasive species. The O&amp;M plan has been revised to require that when the pool is drained at the end of the season, it is discharged to a dry well located outside the 100-foot buffer. The location of the dry well and dry well detail have been added to the revised plan. In response to the board's question at the last meeting regarding a small channel which discharges to Lake Chikwick from the general direction of Bonnie Lane, the applicant provided a memo detailing the drainage system in place for Bonnie Lane. The applicant has reported, based on record plans and field observations, the small channel is predominantly the result of the existing street stormwater drains within Bonnie Lane, while the on-site wetland and the two drains which discharge to the wetland from abutting properties also contribute to the street drains. Based on the applicant's description of the drainage system, our peer review consultant concluded that the channel appears to be an intermittent stream, and the small on-site wetland would be classified as a bordering vegetated wetland, thus subject to the Mass Wetlands Protection Act, and that's why they're before you as well as conservation. Horsley Witten's third and final peer review letter, which closes out the review, has been received. Please note that the applicant has not yet filed the notice of intent with the Conservation Commission. The commission's review could result in plan changes. I've drafted a decision for your consideration, which specifies any material changes to the plan could result in a modification back before you.
And the applicant somewhere of that, kind of willing to go forward?
We are, yes.
The applicant has, however, received a variance from the ZDA already for a new permanent structure within 100 feet of the wetland. So they've gone the ZDA, they're before you, they have yet to file conservation.
Okay. Are there any public comments that have come in? From like online emails?
Hold on.
Is there any members of the public that wish to speak to this one?
So I've received one related to 169 Chestnut Street. The A&R that was just approved.
Okay, yeah, not a public hearing, so I think we covered everything on that one. So nothing as to this?
Nope.
Okay. Board members, questions or comments? Return to Peter. Any questions or comments? Good.
Are you okay with, like, the resolution of the channel thing? I mean, because I know...
I would agree that it is intermittent.
Do you think that we're doing everything we should mitigate any impact related to that, or can it be part of this?
I'm not sure that I fully understand the impact of this on the channel, because sort of two related conclusions. One is that the intermittent channel appears to be caused by Bonnie Lane-related drainage. Okay. And that the drainage from the associated wetlands are also part of the Bonnie Lane drainage. So does that mean that therefore this will also connect to the lake?
It does, and that's what the peer reviewer said, that this will, it's going to go to the wetland first, which then goes to the drainage system within Bonnie Lane and outlets into the channel. The pool plan has previous patio pavers, which are going to help infiltrate prior to getting to the wetland, and based on her condition, a dry well has been added. So when it's drawn down, it's going to go to a dry well to slow the release, and again, treat it on the way to the wetland. And so it's all about, are we getting a treatment to go to that wetland, because it is going to the lake?
And do we think that treatment is sufficient, since it's going to the lake?
The peer reviewer thought it was sufficient. It's being treated as best management practices that we have approved in the past.
Approved that close to the lake in the past?
I mean, the problem is that if Bonnie Lane came, well, it wouldn't be built today under the zoning that exists today, which is the problem, but it's already there, so it makes it, you know...
We've certainly had other permits on Bonnie Lane, several of them for additions and other things like that, over the years.
But not pool drainage.
I'd have to look. There's a lot of houses with pools, but...
There are.
There are.
Well, John, that's the reason that I said I didn't have questions, because we're dealing with something that's there, but...
The only thing that occurred to me from this, and it might not have anything specifically to do with this pool per se, but if drainage from Bonnie Lane creates an intermittent stream that close to the lake, that, that's the more...
Yeah.
Significant issue, and is there any way to deal with that problem? I mean, again, that seems to me, if there's anything that's going to cause a problem in the lake, it's runoff from a roadway.
Yeah.
I mean, they don't salt that street, do they, Gene?
I don't know. I don't think they use, I think it's a mix, but I would have to ask.
I would guess that they do, because the very end of Bonnie Lane slopes down, and in order to get back up, I think, you know, tend to do that.
So I think I agree with you guys. I don't think it's, I don't see this project as causing much, if any, additional problems.
It's an incremental...
Right.
...risk, which is concerning.
So I wonder...
But it is incremental.
And they are doing, and there are some good mitigation, as well as, they still have to go to conservation. Yep. But I wonder if there's, you know, we had Jim Stanford last time, it was great, but I wonder if there's a way to suggest, hey, this might be an area maybe to focus in testing, you know, to see if, you know, if where there's runoff, if we're getting, like, high buildup of chemicals or anything in this specific area, because then we could maybe know, okay, maybe the increments are actually getting too high, or we need to do something about that channel, but maybe that's a suggestion.
I would really welcome that, you know. I'm not quite sure how we act on it. There's nothing before us, but...
No, well, right, and so I think this isn't the problem when we vote on this, but I wonder if we can send a letter, or maybe, Gene, if you could draft something that we could vote on at a future meeting of just saying, hey, we approved this, and we noticed that in our discussions came up that there was this stream, and that the peer reviewers found that what the causes were, and we just have some overall concerns about that, and could this be a focus of some testing, maybe next summer, or in the spring, or whenever you do the testing? So we could kind of couple together over the next month or so, just...
Do you want me to just test the water first and talk to the people that do the testing and see if they can add that?
Sure. Yeah? However you think is the best, but I just want to...
I think that'll be the first approach.
Okay.
If for some reason that's not doable, then we can reach out again.
Yeah, just let them just report, that would be great. Okay. So, and the peer review comment that you had mentioned is in the conditions, correct?
Yes, yep.
Okay. So, any other questions or comments? We get a motion to close the public hearing as to 104 Bonnie Lane?
So moved.
Motion made? Can we get a second?
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Conservation remains?
Yes.
So is conservation going to say, well, planning board approved this? And the reason, the reason I'm asking that is, is there any reason for us to consider waiting to see what conservation?
They seem to wait for us. Right. And I don't think it's as an approval, I think it's more that we approved the plan, but I don't think, I don't think it means that we, I don't know...
I mean, part of what we said here was, as sort of almost an assurance, was, wow, they still have to go through conservation, and so that...
Given, given we're in December, we don't really need to do this right now, right? It's not like they're going to start working on this next week.
I wonder if this is an instance where, I mean, I think we all have some level of concern while still recognizing that, look, Bonnie Lane is there, and yes, it's incremental, but given these levels of concern, would this make sense to pause? Is that, is that a problem?
I don't know that, well, I don't think we have any specific timelines that were required to close a public hearing.
No.
Right? But the notice of intent hasn't even been filed, right?
Right.
So...
If I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
So the, part of the requirements for filing a notice of intent through the Well and Protection Act is that you have to apply for or obtain all our other obtainable permits. The applicant is taking it very slowly through the process, zoning first, we got approval for zoning, planning board second.[1678.73] planning board second, we're optimistic that we're gonna get the decision from the planning board this evening and then go to the conservation commission. We're not looking to kind of get too far ahead of ourselves or spend money or waste time unnecessarily. So if the board would make a decision tonight with the condition that we will come back with any suggested changes by the commission, we're certainly happy to add a condition that the peer reviewers suggested or that Gene can draft. But we don't, we wouldn't feel comfortable leaving the planning board process open before we get to conservation.
And my caution was more if they do make plan changes, that you guys deserve to see those as well. And so if they were deemed material, then they'd have to come back under a modification, which is another public hearing. So that's, we notice, you're leaving yourself susceptible to more costs, yes.
And I think, I would just say, I think our conservation commission takes their role very seriously and I've never really considered them. I think in some places they may be more of a rubber stamp on other boards, I don't think that's-
I'm not suggesting-
No, I'm just saying that I have, that gives me solace that I don't think they would just say we approved it, considering times that if they've, plans have come back changed from conservation.
Each of the peer review letters have gone to the conservation administrator. She hasn't raised any flags with me through that process. So she's our, they haven't gone to the commission yet, but they've certainly gone to her.
I'd be in favor of moving forward.
And look, I can answer my question.
Yes, and they're good, they're all good. Okay, so let's make a-
I think you were waiting for a second.
A second, yes, to close the public hearing. Okay, all in favor of closing the public hearing? Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Here. Yes, yes, Kelly?
Yeah.
And I don't, yes. All right, let's review remotely, let's review the decision.
So I have a question about paragraph one.
Paragraph? Yeah?
Item one, I'm sorry, not numeral one. It's a very affirmative declaration that there will not be any significant degradation. I think we've talked about there's good mitigations, but I don't know that I'm ready to conclude that there will be no degradation. I mean, I know it says the word significant. That's standard language that we use.
I think it's a requirement of the-
Yeah, it is.
Right, I think that's a requirement, that's a required fact that we have to find if we're going to issue the permit. So that's the issue.
Right.
Which one do you want to give a D or a B?
Page two, one, just actually just literally one, first sentence. As a result of the proposed construction in conjunction with other uses nearby, there will not be any significant degradation of the quality or quantity of water in or entering the lake.
And not only do we have the project engineer's certification to that, our peer review consultant, which is unusual, but she, upon her review certified that there wouldn't be as well. That same statement from her, which again, that's unusual, I was surprised to see that.
So what do you mean here that deals with what we just talked about? The conservation commission says anything I just find it?
On number seven, oh, page four.
And there's a finding of fact that they haven't filed their N O R yet.
Could you, could you expand that first sentence? A change is made to the plan as a result of, you know, maybe mentioned-
Inclusive of-
Including but not, you know, limited to conservation commission?
Yep.
So the town fires approve any changes made to the plan, including but not limited to plan changes made by the conservation commission or any other board? Just in case.
I'm not a lawyer, but I know that's law, law area. Including but not limited to.
Gene, just a question, there's no explicit specifications of the pool that needs to go into the special permit? Like in other words, like whether it's a saltwater pool or anything like that?
There's no backwash, so the cartridge system is important, that's in here. And their O and M plan is going to be attached right to the decision and recorded with it. So I specified it becomes part of this decision and recorded with it, along with the site plan. So there'll all be one document at the registry. So that when the house, if it's ever sold, usually these documents turn up in closings. And so that's a good way that the next owner is aware of the O and M plan. And I've been doing that for the last several pulls.
Great. We get a motion to approve the watershed special permit for 104 Bonnie Lane.
Has amended?
Has amended, thank you.
So moved.
Motion made, you get a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Alyssa?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. John?
Yes.
Peter?
No.
No, Kelly?
Yeah.
Okay, four to one. Okay, thank you, thank you, board members, for all your questions and comments. Let's do, um, let's do the discussion item for 21 High Street and then we'll go into the new public hearing. Just wanna do that one, that should be relatively quick, right, Gene?
The 21 High?
Yeah.
Think so?
Okay, let's do that first and then we'll do the, then we'll do the new public hearing and then we'll come back to the potential zoning by law amendments. 21 High Street.
Just give me one second, please.
All right, request for determination of an insubstantial change to the approved notice of decision, sub district A master plan special permit approved March 10th, 2020 to allow for the conversion of approximately 10,000 plus or minus square feet of existing commercial space within the historic mill building, the unfortunate space commonly known as 120 Water Street, into up to 11 residential apartment units. Proposal includes a mix of four studio apartments, four one bedrooms, two bedroom units and a three bedroom unit. Gene, you wanna tell us a little bit and then we'll hear from the applicant?
Sure, I have Philly, lot of comments, given that mostly these board members weren't here when this effort started back in 2007, so I just wanna provide the background and what they're asking for today. So on March 10th, 2020, master plan special permit was approved, which transitioned all the prior approvals and there's numerous special permits that have been issued for the project. So it moved them, they transitioned into the sub district A overlay guidelines. At that time, no changes were proposed to the property or structures other than the uses and structures previously approved by the planning board. This application does not propose any exterior changes or site plan changes. The modification consists only of interior floor plan changes. The property is located in the I S and R four zoning district and the downtown overlay sub district A and the Machine Shop Village Neighborhood Conservation District. The current general business use requires, so the area we're talking about transitioning from commercial to residential, that use requires 30 parking spaces. The proposed mix of residential units would require 17 parking spaces, 13 less than the current use. So that was my initial thought, is it gonna impact the parking on the site? As stated above, the original approvals for the property were transitioned and incorporated into the sub district A special permit approval, including the May 20, 2008, planned development district special permit. So this all came in under a planned development, much different zoning than what exists today. So that permit was known as phase two A of the phase one historic mill buildings development. The original approval contemplated the conversion of approximately 65,000 square feet of vacant space within the mill buildings into an additional 50 residential units, only eight of which were constructed under the 2008 permit. It is noted that in addition to changing market demands after the original permits were approved, the applicant was subject to a building moratorium that limited the residential construction at the time to 10 units per year. So we used to have a phased by law that we were limiting, that has since sunsetted. Furthermore, in the phase one approval, the 2007 planned development district approval was for conversion of 20 residential units within the complex. A total of 19 of those were constructed. And then in 2008, with this permit, 50 were approved, eight of which were constructed. So a total of 70 units were approved to be converted from commercial space to residential use within the existing East Mill and only 27 of those units were actually built. It can be questioned whether this is an insubstantial change to come before you because they were all approved previously. However, I felt the board should make that decision. So attorney Brian Barnes submitted a memo in support, which I have on the screen, including Parker. He details reasons as to why recently approved inclusionary housing requirement by law is not applicable to the applicant's request. And again, that was another motivation for me to bring it here. And the reasoning for that is an application for definitive subdivision approval and a definitive subdivision plan for the entire East Mill complex was filed with the town in February of 2020 and approved on March 10th of 2020. As such, the East Mill complex is entitled to a subdivision zoning freeze pursuant to master general law. Therefore, the property is not subject to the, or governed by the inclusionary housing requirement recently approved at town meeting. The bylaw went into, the zoning was approved after the March 10th, 2020 approval and the eight-year zoning freeze took effect, so. So.
So froze the zoning in 2020, was that when this special permit was approved?
That's the special permit that transitioned all previous permits. I'm sorry, that was the definitive subdivision and yes, the master plan was approved right around that same time. Not sure it was the exact same night.
And what's in this building now and what was called for as part of that master plan for this building? So what's in, what's in there now and what was in the plan that we're now looking to change?
So, David Steinberg from R C G. Specifically where these 10 units, or these 10,000 square feet we're talking about are in a building, it has been office space since we acquired the property. We never changed the use in this particular space, but we had designed it out and permitted it previously for transitioning to apartments. So when we did the original special permits as part of the master plan, these parts of the buildings were included in where we were gonna put residential apartments that we never got to.
Right, so 2008.
Yep.
The plan was to take this commercial space, change it into apartments
Right.
for a bunch of different reasons that didn't happen.
Correct.
Got it. 2020, we updated everything, put this all on the master plan, new special permit, new subdivision, everything kind of redone into one. As part of that, did that incorporate the fact that it was going to still transition into residential? Or was it now, okay, this is, this is now commercial?
I believe it kind of incorporated the prior permits. It referenced the prior permits having been issued and said that that phase was complete. And that's how that prior permitting was dealt with because it also included, you know, exterior landscaping and other things such as that. And at the time that the conversion was processed, I believe it had already then been occupied by commercial space. And, you know, I think in the interim, it was really dealt with by the just building inspector on a case-by-case basis as potential tenants came in looking to occupy it.
And how many more? So here's my, here, I guess where I'm going with this is, I think it's the, changing those to these types of units seems like a great idea to me. It seems like the space is not being very well used right now. Adding that number of people into this area is not gonna have really, I don't think, any impact. But I struggle to say that it's insubstantial. Those are what I think it would be a result of a modification. It seems pretty overtly kind of simplistic that it wouldn't be a big issue given all the people that are there and all the apartments that we've approved and the space and the parking. I just don't know that changing from retail to, or commercial to residential really would ever be, I don't know that I would ever deem that insubstantial. That's just what I'm struggling with. Even, and then, but then it was already approved for that, but how long do you go with that?
But you said it in the beginning, I think, is that if you look at the overall scale of the complex, I think what we're talking about is just immaterial, it's rounding basically and the net impact of it is rounding and you probably wouldn't even know one way or the other if the use changed for 10 or 11 units. And the fact that, as Gene said, it requires less parking is probably a little bit less intrusive that, you know, to me, I think it's like, I don't see there any value of having a public hearing on this.
I don't necessarily disagree. But I guess I get, I think this is more about the process than about this. It's more like, so what if it's this 10,000 square feet and then it's another 10,000 square feet and then it's another 10,000 square feet? And each one is de minimis, but over time, does that add up? I just struggle with the idea.
But I think that, you know, this is a unique property and the fact that it's had all the zoning over the years and we've done master plans and stuff, it seems to me that within the envelope of the total, you gotta allow some level of flexibility just because it's so large and you gotta be able to tweak it to margins. And the fact that we, it went high, we did propose this many residential units and we're still coming in slightly under it, it says to me that that's not a big deal at all.
You write up a decision and condition that any future conversions of more than 10,000 square feet or whatever number you want to apply to it would be deemed a modification.
I appreciate that, Gene, I don't necessarily want to limit it. I think it's my own struggle of whether or not, when you're changing a use to multifamily, I just struggle to find that insubstantial. And it could be beneficial, it very well could be less impactful. I just go back to maybe that's just something that deserves a public hearing. That's just what I'm struggling with.
Do you have any concerns about this also setting a precedent?
I do.
For other cases where there could be a concern, but, oh geez, you did this before.
I do have, I do, it's slight because as John said, this is a master plan, which we don't have a lot of, the mills and where, I do have that concern. I'm just trying to balance that with the fact that this is so unique and there are so many apartments that we've approved in this area that this change does seem very minimal and it was already planned. But that is a concern I have of, I really like to make, when something's insubstantial, I feel, it's like, I feel like, not to go back to football because I think a bunch of you Patriots fans are probably traumatized from this weekend, but it's like the replay, like it should be clear and obvious. It should be obvious that it's insubstantial, otherwise it's not. Like if we're having a discussion about it, to me, it's not insubstantial, it should be obvious.
One thing that also triggered some level of concern in my mind and that is there's been so many apartments and so many in that area that I think-
Which way does that weigh?
Well, to me, it weighs that we should be careful that we proceed with more, not with excessive, but with do care. And if this is borderline, to me, that argues, all right, let's have a public hearing.
I would agree with Peter.
Let's air it out.
Yep.
Yeah, I think the change of use, even though it's de minimis with respect to just the envelope, it's still a pretty significant change of use.
Let me ask this, how can, can we do a public hearing on this as a modification, but also pare it down? I don't think we need a fiscal impact study. I don't think we need a giant traffic study because I just think we need the minimum of notification to a butters and we need to just have it as a public hearing and just, really just, just so we can have all the details. But I don't want, I don't think it requires the full level of, of all the traffic studies and the fiscal and all of that because we know that, we've had those studies done, and I don't think that's necessary. I'm just not, I'm not ready to say it's insubstantial.
Provide for a list of waivers that they ask you and then in your deliberations, you either approve the waivers or not. And then they get put in the decision if you approve them.
Okay, so I think that would be the way that we would anticipate. Again, I think it's, I think it's good for the property overall. But I think to Peter's final point, which kind of pushes me, is that we've had so many discussions and so many public hearings and so many meetings and we've, and there's been other ones that we've said, yeah, insubstantial, like or, you know, when we change the barber shops or things like that, things that were just easy yeses. When we're changing a use from commercial to residential, I just think we need to just proceed with just a slight bit of caution. And I think it's, I think it's an easy yes to get to, but I think we need to, I think we need to go through the process, if that makes sense to you guys. I would also ask that, I think you should put in some, you know, I know you say it doesn't, inclusionary zoning doesn't apply, but it would be nice to have some affordable units. Just throwing that out there. Brian, you look like you have something you wanna say.
Well, I mean, obviously I would advocate for it being approved as an insubstantial change and in particular, just perhaps if we could have this one conversion approved as such. I think Gene's right, whether or not you conditioned it that if you were to approve it as an insubstantial change, it is going to be cumulative analysis because we're under the existing approval. Every time we would want to add further conversions, we would be needing to go through the same process. And you could review it. I think one of the difficulties is, you know, the, just the timeline between the notice and getting through the process and trying to, you know, manage, I guess, the, you know, the market and the commercial market really isn't there and there's such a lead time in construction that I think it would be helpful if we could maybe at least have you consider approving this one request and then on a going forward basis perhaps, because- And then, on a going-forward basis, perhaps, because an additional 11 units in the context of the 70 that were really approved here for these buildings, in, in my mind anyway, just does seem to be insubstantial.
I, I get it. I think it's more about the It's hard, I just think it's too hard. With all that's been done in the area, and then again, it's, you're talking about permits that were 14 years ago and for a variety of different reasons it didn't happen. I agree that it does seem de minimis. But I, I, I think for the reasons we kinda stated earlier, I, I, I don't think, I mean, we can, but we'll put it to a vote. We'll put it to a vote. What's the timeline, Gene, for, I, I mean, again, this isn't something that we need to have 10 public hearings. This is something that we need to have one public hearing and can potentially make a decision, you know, at, at that time.
So the timeline for modification, by the time they file their application, it's a whole month before they get before you. 'Cause it requires two, um, consecutive weeks noticing, and it takes a week to get it to the Tribune to notice it, so.
So, but could it be for the, the end of January meeting, or that? Potentially?
Could you get me the application tomorrow?
Alright. I, well, why don't we just
The January meeting is the 17th, and so to put it in perspective, we're already at that month. There is a week play in it, and I always work with these guys to take advantage of the week play, but it's just tight.
Well, we'll, we'll put it to a vote. That's, that's our process. Um, so can I get a motion to approve the request for a determination of an insubstantial change? We'll just do it as an affirmative motion, just for the motion sake. Motion's made. We get a second, just for the second? Second, okay. All, all those in favor of determining insubstantial change? Uh, oh, we gotta go, uh, we'll do real call vote. Alyssa?
No.
John?
Yes.
Peter? No. Kelly?
No.
I vote no as well. Um, so, determined not insub- cannot make the determination that it's insubstantial. I would definitely welcome a modification. And I think that's the, that's kinda the way the board would handle these. Okay? And I appreciate your advocacy and, and it, it's, I think it's right there on the line. But thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, new public hearing. Yes, new public hearing?
Yes.
Alright, we got the other half of the team now. Uh, 14 Second Street, 149 Main Street, Second and Main LLC. Application for a site plan review, parking, inclusionary housing requirement, downtown overlay district, special permits under Article 8 supplementary regulations. Applicant proposes redevelopment of the property into a mixed-use development, contained within a single building, including ground floor commercial space, along with two floors of residential units above the first floor. A total of 24 residential units are proposed, along with parking, landscaping, lighting, and other improvements to be located on a single lot, consisting of approximately 28,559 square feet by combining parcels known as numbers, known and numbered as 149 Main Street and 14 Second Street. The property is located within the general business district and downtown overlay district. Okay, uh, just, uh, preliminary. So this is going to be a new public hearing. Uh, it is, um, not going to, we are not going to close this public hearing today, so this will be the first public hearing for this. Uh, there will be at least one more. Whether or not we need, uh, other ones after that, we'll have to wait and see. The way that it works is that I'm, Gene's gonna give us a little introduction about the property. This is a property that has come before us for discussion items in the past. So we've discussed it with the applicant, uh, in the past at public hearings. But this hearing is brand-new. So all of the evidence, all the things that we're going to decide on is what's presented in these public hearings. So the discussion items from the past really don't influence that. We're gonna be deciding based on what is presented by the applicant, by our, um, town staff in giving us review, by the, uh, experts who provide information, by the peer reviewers, and also by public, um, comments and questions. So what's gonna happen is, Gene will give us an introduction. I'll then hear from the applicant. I assume, John, that there'll be a presentation. We'll have a presentation. After the presentation, board members will have the opportunity to ask questions. Then I will open it up to, uh, public questions. So you may have a question that you're dying to ask. We may already ask it, so just, if we do, you don't have to come up. But anyone who wants to come up and say something, you are more than welcome to. The way that works is you come to the podium. You introduce yourself, tell us your name and where you live. Then you may make a statement, may ask a question, or some combination thereof. If you're making a statement or asking a question, do it to the board. We'll then either answer it or relay it to, uh, the applicant or the appropriate person to answer, or tell you that it's not something that we can answer or appropriate to answer. Uh, so that's how it's going to work, okay? If any questions come in online, Gene, please let us know.
Okay.
Let's go.
I'm, I'm sorry, Gene. You talk, you don't need to know how many people, um, from the public are in the room?
Sure. I, so, what, you guys don't have to raise your hands. I'm just gonna count everyone that's here. Uh, three, six, nine, 12, 15. So there are about, uh, Kelly, there are about 20 people in the room. I think about five to eight of them are from the applicant and the rest are members of the public. So I'd say 10 to 12. The young girl in the front's probably a member of the applicant's team. I would ca- no, I'm joking. Um, alright, so we have about 10 to 12, I'd say, um, public, non-associated people. Okay. Alright, go ahead. Gene?
Alright, so the application has been sent to Hosley Witten for stormwater peer review. Initial comments have been received and the applicant is preparing a response to those comments. Likewise, the traffic assessment and parking utilization study has been sent to TEC and we're waiting a response to that. The fiscal and community impact statement has been sent to department heads for review and comment. The chief assessor responded that everything seems reasonable from his end. The school department responded that the content is fine. Please note that this was sent internally for department review, not to a third-party peer review consultant. It was pretty straightforward. RKG will attend the January 3rd meeting to answer any questions the board may have on that, um, fiscal impact and community impact statement. Department review has been received from NAPD Conservation and DPW Operations. No concerns were raised. NAFD will likely submit the comments, I thought, ahead of today's meeting. They have requested a formal sweat path announce, but I have not got, I have not received their comments yet. Um, the applicant has been before the Historical Commission for a demo delay review for 14 Second Street. The house was constructed in 1900. My understanding is that they agreed to no delay. Included in your packet is the chair of the Historical Commission's signature on the demo, demolition of building affidavit. And so that's a process to get the building permit to demo it. It has to be signed off for, by a number of people, including the chair of Historical Commission.
Okay. John, go ahead.
Please, the chair of the members of the board for the record, John Smolak, attorney for the applicant, uh, Second and Main LLC. Uh, with me this evening are members of our project team, both from Lang and Engineering and JTA Architects, including Hillary Holmes to my left, uh, Maximo Polanco, and Sean Su King, who is, who are all from Lang and Engineering, who are here to discuss matters of civil engineering, traffic, and landscaping. And again, also with us is, uh, uh, both Chris Brown and Jim DeBarro from JTA Architects, and who you'll hear from a little later this evening. So for the, this evening's presentation, what we plan to do is start off with a, just additional background on, on, on the project. And we understand the board is, we've been before the board several times, and, um, however, this is the first public hearing, so we'll provide a little background detail, which the planning board has heard in the past, but perhaps others in the public haven't. Uh, then from there, we'll, uh, Fat Al will follow the discussion by Lang and Engineering, who will walk you through the site civil, stormwater, uh, landscaping and traffic for the proposed project. And lastly, the, our project architects, JTA Architects, will, will walk you through the, uh, the building design layout in addition to, uh, uh, the elevations, uh, that you have in your materials, uh, this evening. So, um, as just mentioned by Gene, I think Gene provided a, a good, good overlay in terms of the project and, uh, uh, but, uh, you know, the project involves, uh, uh, the initial, uh, raising or demolition of the two existing buildings on the property. Um, and the construction of a single three-story, uh, mixed-use building, including approximately 6,700, uh, square feet of leasable area on the ground floor, commercial, uh, along with a total of 24, uh, residential units on the following, uh, second and third floor. Uh, those units will consist of a combination of one and two-bedroom units. Three of those units will be set aside as affordable units under the, under the new inclusionary housing, uh, bylaw. And, uh, in addition, um, uh, while, uh, there's no, um, decision whether these units would be rental or ownership in our informal discussions in the past, but, uh, uh, the applicant has decided to go with an ownership unit rather than a rental unit, which we think probably is more fitting with the downtown area. Fides, perhaps? With ownership units, uh, rather than rental units for
For the whole building, or is it mixture?
Uh, for the rest, it'll be, um, all ownership units for the second and third floors. So again, we think that probably falls more in line with bringing more stability to that area, in the downtown area, particularly since this is the first building that this board is really taking a look at in terms of this mixed-use, uh, proposal. So, um, in addition, um, in terms of the required zoning relief, uh, although where, uh, the site is entirely within the general business zoning district and the downtown overlay district, we're filing an application for which is a special permit for the downtown overlay district, as well as site plan and parking special permits, in addition to the inclusionary zoning, uh, special permit that's required for the project. Uh, in terms of the, uh, existing site, site, and starting with the existing conditions plan, uh, as I indicated, the, the parcel of the property consists of two separate parcels currently, with the existing, uh, former Santander Bank Building at 149 Main Street, which is a little over 3,300 square feet in size, uh, along with a, uh, second lot at 14 Second Street, uh, which, uh, includes an existing single-family residential home, as Gene indicated, is, is, uh, is quite old. It's, uh, it's, it's actually, we've done, we've done some research as part of the demo delay review and, and the, the house was probably built around the 1880s and so. But that was discussed with the Historical Commission, as, as Gene has indicated, and demolition review was undertaken last week with the board and with the Historical Commission, and the commission determined that it, the site was not historic in nature, in nature, or preferably preserved as a significant structure. So, um, uh, so that was signed off with respect to any potential demolition delay review. The, uh, existing, uh, Santander Bank Building is, was built around 1968, so it is subject to a demo, uh, delay review. So, um, collectively, uh, when you combine, uh, both parcels, uh, you, you, the total lot area is a little over 28 and a half thousand square feet of lot area, which is about two-thirds of an acre in size. And in terms of, uh, well, keeping on the same slide, uh, in terms of the neighborhood, the neighborhood includes a mix of, uh, residential, uh, single-family and multifamily buildings in the area, and really serves as a transition between some of the residential and, and the commercial uses. But if you're looking at the site and this aerial to, to the, to the south of the top of the screen, you have two existing, uh, residential, uh, homes beyond which is the Foster and Sullivan Insurance Building. And beyond that is, uh, what's called Sturbridge Arms, which is a 20-unit condominium, uh, complex with, with two separate buildings. You cannot see it really from this aerial, but it's beyond, uh, further beyond, uh, the Foster and Sullivan Insurance Building. Uh, to the west or to the right-hand side of the slide is an existing, uh, single-family residential dwelling, which is in the R4 district. To the, uh, east or across Main Street is the vacant Bank of America Building, also zone, general business. And then to the north and across the street, across Second Street is, uh, the Fries Courthouse Building, which is a commercial building. And as you travel further down Second Street, there are existing multifamily, uh, apartment buildings as well. So as you, as I mentioned, I, we think that the site does provide an opportunity within the downtown overlay district as sort of a transition uh, between the more intensive commercial and residential uses and the single-family uses that are in that area. And as you know, the, um, the purpose of the downtown overlay district is really designed to provide some flexibility uh, for those buildings and lots in the downtown area because it's such a mishmash of various building sizes, building uses, lot sizes, and the like. And so, uh, at least our feeling is that that downtown overlay district was again, designed to before, afford the flexibility to create mixed-use in other projects. And, and in terms of the stated purposes of, of the mixed-use, uh, of the downtown overlay district is to encourage mixed uses within the same structure with first-floor commercial space, to encourage pedestrian-friendly environment, environment, and to bring consumers into the area, to minimize visual and functional conflicts between residential and non-residential, uh, uses both within and abutting, uh, the district, and to allow for more compact development. And I think, uh, as you'll hear this evening, I think this project hits all four of those, uh, factors and, and many others. And, uh, so at, at this point, I'd like to turn it over, the discussion over to Hillary Holmes from Lang and Engineering, who'll walk you through the site civil.
Yeah, if you want to advance to the next slide, we'll go right into the, uh, proposed site plan. So what you can see on your screen is the ground floor, uh, site plan for the project. And you have Main Street on the, um, on the left side, going up and down, and Second Street on the bottom of your screen. Um, so the area in white is our ground floor, um, building footprint, which is the commercial space. And then you can see, um, we have 22 tandem parking spaces that are proposed that are, will be covered by the upper second and third floors of the building. Um, the main entrance for the lobby and the commercial space will come off of Main Street. We have proposed, you can see in the darker gray is what is our surface lot. So you have your one-way entry coming off of Main Street for vehicles, and then the exit would be off of Second Street. Um, we have 22 surface parking spaces that you can see that are along the top of your screen, uh, the top of the site. And then we have about a five-foot separation from the edge of the parking spaces on the top of the plan to the, um, the abutter. In that zone, along that edge, we're proposing a retaining wall, and I'll go into a little bit more discussion in the grading on the next slide for that. And then we also have some street, street trees and some landscaping proposed as well that you can see. And, um, Ashawn will touch on that a little bit later, um, in more detail. We are proposing new concrete sidewalks at this lo- location too, along Main Street and Second Street.
Okay, just asking questions as we go.
Yep.
How do the tandem parking spots work?
Yes, so those tandem parking spaces would be assigned to the residents, um, for the units. For parking, so I think there would have to be some give and take in terms of access in and out to those spaces. We have 24 units, um, and requiring 44 spaces overall for our commercial and our residential, um, development.
I'm sorry, is it, it's a 44?
So we have
Is the 44 meant to cover just the residential?
No, it's, we're, so the 44 spaces covers our commercial and our residential.
Do you know what the breakout is?
On-site. We'll get into more specifically, like, the utilization around the, for the commercial spaces, for the additional spaces. But in terms of what we're providing on-site, we really have 44 spaces.
Yeah, what, what I may, may wanna add is, in terms of, uh, the tandem spaces, uh, here, um, uh, we have, uh, eight one-bedroom and 16 two-bedroom units. So it's, uh, likely that most of those tandem spaces will be assigned in that manner to mostly the two-bedroom units, as there are service parking spaces as well. So that's, that's the plan.
So, definitely wanna? Alright, just give, come, come back. Go ahead, go ahead.
And, and, and just one other item that I neglected to mention as well. Uh, we had discussed the possibility of, uh, restaurant use at this site. And at this point, we don't have a prospect for a restaurant, so it's unlikely we're gonna propose one. And, you know, I think that at, at some point, if we do have a restaurant use in the future, which is 15, 15 spaces per thousand, we'd have to come back to the board to, to have that discussion, to justify any, any parking that might be required for that particular use.
Okay, so, I guess just to jump on that, just my biggest concern with this project, which I, when we were having the discussions, if we could silence that, that would be awesome, is the parking. So, um, because everything else about it, and we'll talk about it, I really like. I just think the parking is, is, is the biggest issue. So if if we go, as we move forward in this, I think we'll need some, either some specifics as to what's proposed, or we'll need to condition what's not allowed unless you come back for a modification, right? So like, if you're gonna tell me that So like if you're going to tell me that these are the forty-four and then we're using a couple of other kind of on-street parking and stuff like that because it's a retail shop or a service thing, you know, a spa or something like that, then fine. But we'll, I'd imagine there would be conditions as to what that could possibly be based on your parking arrangements or vice versa.
Yeah, we're happy to discuss that as we get in further on the traffic discussion and happy to discuss-
Okay, right.
Parking arrangements and such.
Okay, that's fine, sure.
Yeah, we have some slides that go into more detail about the numbers in terms of the parking and utilization for the commercial spaces.
Okay, that, and all that's great, I'm just saying that, that I think we're going to want to be specific in our conditions. That at least if I were approving this, I'd do it with conditions of what it could possibly be in the commercial or what it couldn't be based on the parking and based on coming back for other, other things.
So I'd just like to go back. Based on the whole discussion here, that I think you said if, if you were to come back with a restaurant, you know you'd have to come back to us for the parking and, and you're highlighting that, that it could be not only that, but other things. And I like what you said, that if it were to be approved, that conditioning would have to be included to require coming back to the board for certain conditions. And I just think we should have a placeholder for that because I think it's a very important point that we don't want to lose downstream.
Yeah, it's, it's, this is a, this is a tricky area and this is a really bold plan, which I, I like. I like that it's bold and that it's new and it's trying to incorporate what I think is something that we need to be doing in our downtown. But we have to be careful in the way that we do it. And especially like if we're going to say where the parking is, then we need to be specific. And based on where the parking is, that's what's allowed, or based on what we're allowing, that's what the, where the parking is going to be. So I think you're aware of that, but I think, I just want to make sure we're, I think you're hearing what we're stressing.
Yeah, yeah, and it's not unusual. I mean, the board has done that with Eaglewood Plaza and so on, sort of making assumptions on various uses. And we're, we're happy to do that. But, and we can get into the parking a little bit more shortly when you hear the full presentation and happy to address it in more detail.
All right, let's keep moving.
Yeah, next slide, please. So I just want to briefly touch on the grading drainage utilities for the site. In terms of utilities, we have a new fire and domestic service connection that will be coming from the building and tying into the water main and Main Street. We have an existing sanitary sewer lateral that's currently for the bank building that we are planning on reusing for the site. In terms of the transformer, you can see the transformers positioned sort of in your upper left-hand corner near the Main Street driveway entrance. We also have stormwater management proposed for the site that is, meets the requirements for the town as well as Mass, the Massachusetts stormwater standards. We are providing water quality units that provide TSS removal, total suspended solid removal. We are providing a subsurface stormwater infiltration slash detention system that will provide a required recharge volume as well as provide peak attenuation for peak flows. In terms of the site existing to propose, there's a slight increase in impervious area, which is why we also are using and proposing an underground stormwater infiltration system. But it is a water quality improvement when you look at existing compared to proposed because much of the existing site is paved parking lot, which tends to have dirtier stormwater runoff. We have a, you know, most of this site is building, which is definitely a cleaner stormwater runoff when compared to street and parking runoff.
And so it's domestic water, so the whole thing is going to be sprinklers for the, for both the commercial and the residential?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Gotcha.
Just a quick question, can you just, just a magnitude and size on how big the transformer is?
Yes, I would say it's probably, that's probably on scale right there. It's probably around six feet by seven feet.
Okay, is that, you guys proposing any vegetation screening from the street?
Yes, so any, any sort of plantings would have to comply with the electric company's requirement. So we do have bollards that are proposed. Beyond the setback requirements for national grid, we would have some grasses around it as well.
Yeah, that's, that's likely the only place where that transformer can be cited. And so what we'll do is our best to screen that from view, making sure we comply with guidelines of the utilities as well. And we don't, we don't have a, you know, definitive exact location for that transformer. And that's something, that's a decision of the utility, you know? So that's, that's the, that's the unknown that we have right now. But, but that's the general location where we've identified.
And just, I'm sorry to go back to the grading utility plan really quickly. I just want to point out, in terms of the grades for the site, the lowest point is really at Second Street and Main Street. And then the grades go up as you go along Main Street and go up as you go along Second Street. When you're looking at the site, the butters, the residential butters to the top of the page are up higher than the existing site. The parking lots, you know, a little, right now, as it is, is probably about two feet or so lower. And so we are proposing a retaining wall because we are proposing a bit of a cut along our parking lot to sort of flatten out the grade. So we do have a retaining wall, which at its maximum height would be five feet, but it tapers down on, on both sides down to grade.
With a fence.
With, and it does have a fence on top of it as well, which we have some images and we'll get into in the next couple of slides.
So I would just want to make sure that that's high enough and enough of a barrier that if cars park facing towards that, that the lights are blocked.
Yes, so, yes, absolutely. And you can, we'll share that in the next couple of slides, so you can see what the fence will look like. And it would be, it would block the lights.
Okay, good.
So Gene had mentioned a turning template analysis for the fire trucks. We will formally submit this stamped, signed and stamped, but we just wanted to share this with the board tonight showing that indeed a fire truck can get into the site and go through it. So there is access to the building from all, all sides. So I'm going to pass it off to Ashan, who will go through the planting and the landscape design for the site.
Good evening to the board. My name is Ashan Sukin, landscape architect with Langen. First slide you see here, I just want to touch base on some of the, the landscape characters that you see. For the streetscape, we have a standard concrete sidewalk that is part of the ordinance for North Anover, so we comply to that. Along the frontage, we have, you can see some brick pavers that's called out. We took into consideration of some of the, the character that's seen from further down Main Street and wanted to kind of incorporate that into this part of the streetscape. In terms of the, the street trees, we have in the furnishing zone on the front, towards the curb, we got five trees on both Second and Main Street, three on the Second and then two on Main. And then getting to the plan top, we have the retaining wall that Hillary mentioned with a fence on top to provide that, the screening for the butters at the, the plan north. And then on the plan east, we have, we have some evergreen, evergreen buffers on the right side with, to provide screening on that one. So it's about ten to twelve feet high.
So just a quick question, retaining wall and the fencing, is the picture, the look and feel of what you're proposing?
Yep, so we're thinking some kind of a wood fence, you know, with the wood posts on that. Just provide full privacy screening on top of the, on top of the wall too, so you can get that added height.
And the buffer screening, you're showing the bottom row center photo.
Yep, yep, so we have-
What type of evergreen screening are you proposing?
Yep, so we have a mixture of those. There's red cedars mostly. Wanted to throw in some variations too, in the, the planting plan that we had submitted. On the top, we had some river birch closer to the corner where it's, you know, where it's still blocked off by the fence. But as you get towards the middle, we have the, the red cedars, just to screen out.
What's the proposed height of the retaining wall and the fencing?
So the, the retaining wall varies. I believe it gets up to about five or six foot height and then comes down flush as you move towards the transformer and then goes both ways on the ends.
And then on top of that is a fence, how-
Six-foot fence.
So on the concrete sidewalk, are you planning to curbing as well?
Yes.
Okay, and what is, what is the curbing made out of? Concrete, is that granite curbing?
I believe it would probably be granite.
I believe it's just granite.
Yeah, similar to the, the character of the rest that you see on Main Street. Next slide, please. Getting into lighting, we have, just wanted to touch base on that. Everything we're proposing is dark sky compliant. All the, all of these are LED fixtures, so they have a full cutoff. There's no, there's like minimal light spill on that, including like we have the fence that you see on the A. For the building-mounted fixtures that you see, that's marked as B on Second Street and Main Street, we wanted to kind of keep that decorative bell-shaped fixtures that you, you know, again, find on Main Street and incorporate that into this design. And then getting into the planting, some of these are the, the species that we're looking at. In total, we have four, sorry, in total, we have twelve trees, including the, the street trees that you see and then all some of the trees on the buffer side. And then all along that where you see like the green areas, those are ornamental grasses. And then just touching base on that, by the transformer area, we have some ornamental grasses for that as you see in the bottom, in the middle one, the switchgrass. So those are placed there.
So just a question, the trees that you plant, would they be as large as the ones that you're showing on the slide?
So I think those are more of like mature height. I would say the ones that we're showing on the slide would probably be around, I would say roughly five, five to eight years. But initially, you know, for the, the street trees, we would have something that would fit into the tree pit. We would limb those up so there's visibility along with, you know, it's, it's not kind of in the way if you're a pedestrian going by. So I would say those are about going up twelve feet or something like that. And then for the evergreens, typically those would be specified at eight to ten feet at the time of planting.
Of planting, all right, thank you.
Yep. Any, any other questions for landscape? Thank you.
Next, we have Maximo Polanco on traffic with Langen.
Good afternoon, everybody. Maximo Polanco with Langen Engineering. I've been the traffic engineer working on the development. So I would say, I would start by saying that the first thing we did when we started working on the traffic assessment, basically that we estimated what would be the trip generation and the parking demand of the development itself. The development, these calculations were done based on the latest industry standards from ITE. And based on those standards, we estimate that the project is not expected to generate more than forty-one peak hour trips, which is comparable to what the driving bank, former driving bank that was there on-site operating. So, and when we compared, because we're comparing to an existing site, we would say that we do not expect this to be a noticeable change in traffic in the area. So in terms of traffic itself, the project is considered a low-traffic generator.
Can you tell us what numbers and criteria you're basing that on? So for instance, you have twenty-four proposed units, how many people is that, that you're proposing?
So-
Hold on, let me finish. And then if it's a, so that's, you know, two-thirds of the project and the rest is the commercial. What type, what are you using as your designation? Just commercial in general or a specific type?
Right, so for the residential units, we're using land use two-twenty from ITE. That's multifamily low-rise. So the, the units, that's, it's based on number of units, not based on number of people.
Okay.
So based on the actual twenty-four people and then-
Twenty-four units.
The commercial, we're using strip retail plaza, which is general commercial, which is below forty thousand square feet. And we're using based on the gross leaseable area, which is sixty-seven hundred square feet in this case.
Okay.
That's how we get those numbers.
As a general commercial, not?
Yes, as a general commercial, nothing specific. As I would say previously said, we don't have a tenant to kind of like identify that.
Okay, thank you.
So knowing, I would say that, like I said before, that the project itself, it's considered a low-traffic generator and it's not expected to result in a noticeable change in traffic in the area. So in addition to that, we also, based on ITE, calculated the average parking demand and found that the development will have an average parking demand of fifty-one parking spaces during the weekend and thirty-nine parking spaces during the regular weekday. So knowing that there's a, this is a mix of uses, we compared the peak utilization of traffic between the two uses and obviously found that the residential obviously peaks from five PM to eight AM, which is basically when everybody is sleeping, coming back from work, coming back from school. And the retail itself, or general commercial, the peak utilization occurs between ten AM and seven PM. So they, in fact, they don't coincide a hundred percent. So to try to maximize the use of the proposed parking layout, which is forty-four parking spaces, we are proposing to share twelve of the forty-four parking spaces between the residential and the commercial. So basically thirty-two parking spaces will be fully dedicated for the residential and twelve parking spaces will be shared with the commercial during basically ten AM and four PM, which to avoid having, I would say, conflict between traffic.
Would, would the, go ahead, John.
So, so I, I'm skipping ahead.
Can I ask a question then specifically about that? So those shared ones, would those be time-limited? So like say thirty minutes or an hour?
Ten AM to four PM and it will be time-limited to like restricted by hours.
Okay, yep, that makes sense.
I, I better miss the, no answer to what you both said, but thought John said that the total parking requirement of the proposed uses is forty-four. This is fifty-one, is there, am I missing something?
The, the forty-four spaces satisfy the parking requirements for residential. And so what we are proposing is an additional twenty-six spaces off, off of the property, which is allowed under the downtown overlay district. And so, so what, what was just suggested is simply that in the off-peak hours for residential, there'll be an ability for the commercial to park in, in certain spaces on the, on the property. Otherwise, they would be off-street parking, I mean, on-street parking.
Okay, okay, that's, okay, that's right. So I mean intuitively, that's what I would have expected, so.
So as I understand it, basically overnight, the forty-four spots should be enough for all your residents. During the day, people either have to share the shared, there'd be some that are reserved for residents. The twelve spots will either have to be shared or people have to find parking on the street or some other local area, right? That's the basics of it?
Correct.
Peter?
Did I hear you say, John, that you're relying on twenty-six off-site parking spots?
Yes.
On-street.
On, on-street.
And can you, so that's, you have forty-
I said we're going to get to that. That, yeah, we'll, we'll get to that, I would say, and, and next slide.
I was surprised to see that you're concluding here that the uses don't coincide even though they do overlap. That seems misleading to me.
So-
Unless you read it close enough to realize that in fact they overlap.
They overlap?
Why would we conclude that they don't coincide?
So they overlap specifically only from four to seven. And that's why we said that we will limit the uses of those shared parking spaces from ten AM to seven, to four PM. So basically, it'll be an hour prior to the peak utilization to the residential in the afternoon and two hours after the peak utilization of the residential in the morning.
I don't understand why you're characterizing it as they don't coincide when they overlap.
Well, the, the time that they don't coincide is more than, I would say, seventy percent. So it's a safe assessment to say that they don't-
Not to the people who are looking for parking during that overlap time. It's not a safe assessment. I mean, that really comes down to where there's the peak, which is that overlap period. That's where we have to understand how that's going to be managed. I just, I just object to characterizing it in a way that is stretching the facts. And I think it's obvious that I object to that. And what I heard you say verbally when you were briefing was that they don't coincide one hundred percent. That's accurate, that's not what's written.
Other questions as we go?
John, you were going to say something?
No. No, I have, I have no comment.
What is your response to my concern that it's being characterized inaccurately?
Well, what, what I'm saying is I think that, and I'm not a traffic engineer, but what I'm saying is that during the peak period of the, of the commercial, I'm sorry, of the residential, the hours are restricted for the residential. But when the residential, folks go to work and so on, folks using the, can use the commercial spaces for a limited period of time. And whether it's 10:00 to 4:00 or some other limited period of time, then perhaps that's something that could be adjusted.
You know, part of the reason I'm raising this, it came up before, and multiple members on the board have highlighted it this evening, that we think there's a fairly high level of concern with parking. And at least in my perspective, that means that we have to not only nail down the facts, but we have to, I think, be very careful how we communicate them, that we're being fully transparent. And I've used those words before. This is just my view. You can choose to communicate however you want, but it's a caution.
Well, there's other, there's also a piece of this discussion dealing with parking utilization on the street as well.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Well, I appreciate the time to express my concerns, appreciate the work being put into this. And you've heard my objections to how part of it was characterized.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I would say the, the last sentence is what we repeated, or what we said last time. So knowing that the, I would say, that parking is a concern and understanding that our demand is higher than what we can provide onsite, we performed a parking utilization study in the area, basically covering Main Street from Waverly Road all the way to Merrimack. We also collected data along School Street and Second Street, just 200 feet south of Main Street, and along Water Street between Main Street and Merrimack. So basically, we collected data for 12 hours from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, every 30 minutes for three days, Saturday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, as explained there, on October 22nd, 25th, and 26th. We found that there's an inventory of approximately 131 parking spaces available in this area. Some of them are restricted by 20 minutes, two hours, three hours, and most of them, about 88 parking spaces are non-restricted.
So I actually have a comment on this. And I really am having difficulty resolving the data on the next couple pages, but there's one big key point that I feel like is missing in the studies, is that on Main Street, you have two very active churches and Sunday hasn't been characterized. And I know that coming down here on a Sunday, it's pretty busy from 8:00, 8:00 to noon. And I feel like that, 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 in my opinion, that was a pretty big miss in the, in the, in the study, because I can imagine that utilization would change pretty dramatically on Sundays between the hours of 8:00 and, 8:00 and noon.
I'm not, I'm not so sure that's the case.
Given that I go to the 12 o'clock mass every Sunday there, I know what, what the deal is. I don't see that as being a big problem. I mean, it's, it, it's more, let's study the whole thing and then drill down into the pieces. I think this is, I, I mean, I think this study's really pretty valuable. It's the first I've ever seen a comprehensive look at everything. And you could argue, you know, part of the problem ends up being is that whoever's coming to the site is not going to park down by Waverly Road. But fair enough, fair enough, you laid it out and let's, let's try to better understand it. I mean, because what's interesting to me is the three days that they looked at it, I, you know, the variation between Tuesday and Wednesday is larger than I thought it would be a little bit. And I don't know whether there's, you know, day of the week seasonality and, you know, again, and I'm not trying to put the burden on this whole thing with you guys, but you know, is, is every day of the week, the pattern similar or is it, is it different? I mean, the Saturday pattern fits a little bit what I thought it would. But the, the weekday one, the magnitude and the difference between the days, it's not clear.
Yeah, if I may?
Yep, go ahead.
In, in terms of Sundays, I mean, John sees it at noon time, I see it at 8:00 AM, 8:00 AM. Those parking lots aren't, aren't filled. There are, there is parking along Main Street. It's rare that it extends down close to this particular site, you know, except for off days like religious, you know, the Christmas periods of time as well. In the mornings, you may see some queuing for St. Michael's School in the morning. I drive by it every single day at different hours of the day, so I see what happens in the downtown area as well. So you might see that once in a while, but it's, it's not too often that you, I mean, in, in this area, I don't, I don't see a, an issue with not examining the Sunday period. I mean, it's a, it's a good point, but, but, you know, for the most part, I think that the other, the other days for taking an examination of the, of the parking trips is, might be a little more valuable.
I would have to say, so I think we've got the Sundays covered, because I'm at, I'm at the charge of 10 crossing the street. So I think, I think we've got the, the time periods covered there. But I think kind of traffic down the street on Sundays, I think is relevant. And then I do also think seasonality, the busiest that I've seen in downtown lately is during the farmer markets on Sunday. So I think whether that affects parking or things like that, there, there may be a seasonality and day of the week to take a look at.
Are you saying you can look at Sunday?
If we have to. I don't think it's, it's necessary. I, I don't, I don't think we have a parking problem in this downtown area.
The takeaway that I have from this, and again, this is the first time we've seen ever this has been something like this is done, so I think it's actually useful, is that, and I think it's sort of the message you're saying, is the peak load across the whole area is not that high. Now, it's probable that the peak load in the core central district, when you take out the St. Michael's side and you take out the Waverly Road side, it's probably heavier in between, I would think. And that is probably relevant because this property is right there. And, but, I mean, I don't know. What's your conclusion from it, from this spending? What do you take away?
Talking specifically about this slide, I would say to continue and I would say answer your question, is that we found that basically the peak, it's 75 parking spaces occupied. And this basically occurred on, on Wednesday and on Tuesday as well. So basically, from the 130, 131 parking spaces, you have 56 parking spaces basically available in the area during, I would say, the worst case scenario here. And that 75 parking spaces, and I would say, if you, if, let's go to the next slide to discuss that, that 75 parking spaces only occurs basically for 30 minutes. Because if you see the peak that it starts increasing at 2:00 PM, then goes to 75 and then decreases back again.
No, I was gonna say, that's really one school that's happened, right?
Yep, basically.
Yep.
Correct. So basically, that's for the school. So if we look at, in, in general, you're using basically half of the parking spaces available in the area.
So to take, to go off John's point on that, when you have that peak parking space utilization, where was that? Was there a specific area where it was peaked? Was it in the centralized? Was it the outer bands of it?
Basically, this is to, for the entire area. We'll have to break it down, I would say, by proximity and different types of area. We do have the data and I would say it's, it's in the appendices to break it down. I can't for now, right now, tell you how, where it is specifically, but we do know that the peak of the 75 occurred basically because of the school.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
For a busy, kind of thriving downtown, what would you want as the utilization, right? Because people, I mean, on the one hand, nobody likes traffic and everyone wants to find a place to park, but at the same time, we want people actually downtown and using the downtown. So I actually think we want, you know, the, there should be an ideal number, I think, of, of spaces available that are cycling. And I think it actually should be higher than this, but that's, that's my question. It's like, where, where ideally, where does...
Specifically for the site or specifically for the entire downtown area?
Just for a downtown area, it's my understanding that you want, you know, a percentage of those parking spots used, because that means people are going and shopping and doing things.
Well, the thing is that you have to basically analyze the entire area, which I would say we have. And if you want, I would say, more turnover of the parking spaces, because if you see the, and, and I would say, I can safely say this, obviously, most of the parking spaces that are being turned over are the ones that are limited by time. The ones that are non-restricted are basically employees of the area that just parked there the entire day. They come and they just go when their shift is, when their shift is done.
I guess, yeah, I guess...
So I would say to make the usage of the area itself as parking, you have to start limiting parking spaces, which you already started doing all, all the way through Waverly.
Yeah, no, I, I get, I think my point was, I just remember when I was working in Beverly, we were doing a parking study to see if we needed to change the parking dynamics downtown. And I don't remember the number, but it was something like you wanted 80% utilization.
At 85%, it's considered capacity. So once you start approaching higher than that, you probably have a parking issue.
Okay, right, so you want.
Correct, but at 85%, you're there.
Right, so right now, right. So there's definitely room.
57% is basically the highest usage that you're seeing here in the city.
Right, which means our, which means what we all know is that our downtown is, most of the time, underused. There are times when it's very busy sporadically, but some of the idea behind our downtown overlay and our downtown improvement and our zoning and stuff like that is we want actually more people.
And, and the thing for a downtown area specifically is that you don't want a, a car coming to your downtown area just to visit one place. You want them to visit various places. So if somebody parks in front of our development and comes in and eat or do whatever business they want to do, and then they go to another place, let's say the CVS, that they don't have to, I would say, move their car. Because if you're within a 10-minute walking distance to a place, you're not gonna go into your car and go and park somewhere else. So you wanna walk.
That's what we want to encourage.
Yeah, that's what you want to encourage, for sure.
Is there a planning standard or some metric that you use to choose the limit of the study area? I'm trying to understand, why did you go to Waverly? Why did you go to Merrimack? How did you determine?
So we actually were doing, going to do a shorter area, I would say, you know, because we wanted to capture the parking spaces that were within, I would say, more close to our site.
Right.
When we discussed with Jean, they suggest, she suggested, like, hey, go to Waverly. That way we have a more understanding.
If you said you had the detail in the appendix, we could probably extract.
Yes, 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 yes. That, that's why I said before, like, we have that detail. I just can't say right now and give you accurate numbers.
Could you take that detail and give us similar representations like you've done for the whole study area? This is very helpful.
Yes.
By segment, by roadway segment.
I'm sorry?
By roadway segment. So from Waverly to first and first to second. And that's what we discussed, is you're gonna see heavenly donuts at 8:00 in the morning, there's a peak. In front of the post office on Saturday morning, there's a peak. And I think they have the data to present that at this point.
And it's not, it's not inconsistent with the beta study that was done a year earlier.
So this is the third time that I know of we've done this study of the same area.
Can you share it? Because I just, you may have passed me by.
I personally did it with some other staff, prior to us leaving Osgood Landing and coming here, because we were concerned about parking at that time. And the overall number, again, was roughly 50%. I know exactly where the peaks are. I know where the residents that live above were parking out there with third shift, parking all day in certain areas. That's why we put the three-hour parking in the segment in front of the new Brad Street on Main. A lot of residents live above in that general block. And so we put three-hour parking there and on First Street on one side of the road. And then Beta did it when we did the downtown improvement master plan. So we have comparable data since, I forget if it was 2017, 18, roughly.
What is your sense of overflow into either the Messina CVS parking lot or the church parking lots? What is your sense of the behavior that would lead to overflow into those areas?
I would...
Just to preface that, we, we understand that the Messina's parking lot is used by, for town hall business, a fair amount of time. It causes enforcement issues and so on and so forth. We understand, appreciate that and understand that. And that's, you know, I guess that's one of the reasons why the parking is sort of limited within 200 feet of our building area. And so, you know, anecdotally speaking, you know, is someone going to walk down who has some business to take care of on, at the commercial space at 149 Main Street, going to park all the way down to Messina's parking lot? I doubt it. Just thinking about that anecdotally. And so, you know, be...
I was gonna say, well, maybe not right now, but I mean, that's, that's kind of the goal, right? So I, to, to your point, I think that's kind of the goal, is that if there's enough to do, then you might park and walk. But if there's only one place you're gonna go, you're gonna park as close as you can, go there and go back. And I think the goal, not necessarily of this particular project, but of downtown improvement, is to make it so you may park at the top or park in the middle and walk up and walk down and actually go do different things instead of just the one stop that, that I think most people do now.
Well, I mean, one of the items that was mentioned informally by the board in a couple of occasions was you wanted to make sure that the residential had sufficient parking onsite and that we would have to deal with the commercial in another way, given the understanding that not a lot of buildings in that area have onsite parking. And so, look at Cambridge. Cambridge eliminated commercial parking requirements. Not saying we do it here, but that's just another example of where it's trending. I mean, you have to get, you have to get activity downtown. And, you know, with the mixed use, that's the way to do it. With an ownership type of mixed use, that's another way to do it as well. So folks feel more identified with the downtown area, so we could take it from a ghost town to something that's much more lively and active.
So I actually really liked this discussion, but we, I wanna, let's move along, just because I, and after this, we'll go to people's comments.
I would say that the last slide, this just clearly shows that there's capacity, I would say, to support the development. And to repeat what I said before, our estimated demand is 51 parking spaces. So the actual usage of the on-street parking spaces that we're basically expect the project to use is seven.
And if someone has a parking or transportation question or a traffic question, we can come back and pump for the information.
Thank you so much.
If we could take just a few minutes to run through the architectural?
Yeah.
I know the board has seen it several times in the past.
Yeah, no, no, but not, but in order to...
I'd like to bring up JTA.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi.
My name's Jim DeVaro. Work for Joe the Architect in Somerville, representing my client, mutual client here of the Crestwood Young Group. And I'll walk you guys through the architectural, so what we have planned for the site. As you can see in this diagram here of the ground floor plan, we do have that main commercial space at the corner of Second and Main, around 6,700 square feet or so. In, in the upper level of the, of the, you know, planned north, there is a kind of a service section, section of the building that will house the lobby, fire room, water room, trash room, any sort of services that the building will need will be in this area. Kind of shaded in blue, kind of hard to see on the projector here, is the two stairwells, as well as the vertical circulation, as well as having a, an elevator. And just in that little sliver to the right of the, the stair in the, on the right, is a bike room. We are gonna try to promote having more bikes in that area. I can go to the next slide. So as for the residential floor plans, we've mentioned before that we have 24 units in total, 12 units per floor. In the second floor and the third floor, basically the same general layout. And how that gets, gets justified is, is we do want to keep the, the perceived height lower. So we do have a mansard roof design, which the third floor on the next slide is basically the same as the second floor, although it lives in the roof. So that way, it has a visual effect of not being as high. As you can see in the center area there, there is a communal space that is open to above, which lets in natural light to the, the center of the building, which is crucial for, you know, just making sure that, even in your, one of these apartment buildings, that it feels light and open and airy rather than, you know, kind of stuffy and closed. And you can, you, you walk a fine line with a double-loaded corridor of, you know, making, feeling very gloss and cavernous. And this kind of opens it up with a lot, a lot more natural light that way. Move on to the next slide. The roof plan as shown here, you can see the, the light well, kind of in this slatted area, the rectangle in the middle, and as well as a roof deck portioned to the planned northwest side of the building.
Just a question on the roof deck. Who would have access to the roof deck? Is this all tenants, like a common area?
It's a, as a common area, correct. Yep. All would have access to that roof deck. Next slide, please.
I'm sorry, in terms of the tenants and the people who have access to the roof deck, is it just residential tenants or even the retail space? is it just residential tenants or even the retail space?
Uh, it would be just the resident, the residents would have access, correct, yep. Um, as for the proposed elevations, we do have the flat elevations as shown here. Uh, we do feature a mansard roof, uh, on this building with, um, also showing, as you can see in the lower elevation, um, outdoor spaces for almost all of the units, um, where you, in your unit, you have, you know, a good balcony space, um, that, that looks out onto, into the open. Um, and as, on the ground floor plane, you can see our, our, our planned commercial space is going to have, you know, storefront windows. Um, and go to the next slide. That bottom elevation is facing, is if, is if you're looking into the parking lot, is if you're standing in the parking lot, looking into the building. Uh, on the far right, there is a, a more, um, a more square section of the building that is, is more modern, that kind of blends with the, the mansard roof section. It's a more traditional style. Uh, and we do have some renderings we can show, which, which kind of go into a little more detail on the materials as well as how that, that gets justified. One thing to note also on that elevation is you can see the grade starting to scoot up as it goes to the left of the plan. Um, that's, that's the grade that's changing onsite. Um, the cars will be parking on grade in, in those spots as, as the kind of grade comes up to meet it. Um, if you go on to the next slide, please, Gene?
And just, just a quick question, where are you planning to place the mechanicals?
The mechanicals on the ground floor plane.
Are they, they're all be on the, located on the ground floor?
For, yeah, the services will, yes, correct. Um, these building sections here are just some, some diagrams to show. The color's a little washed out here, but, uh, anywhere that is, uh, purple is a commercial space. Uh, anywhere that is yellow-ish, you can kind of see it's kind of yellow. It might be on an eye test for everyone here. Um, where it is residential, anything that's grayed out, also eye test, uh, is, is, um, common area, which would be circulation, you know, get moving through the building. Um, on to the next slide. This diagram here shows a typical residential floor, uh, layout, which you can see with all the, the pretty colors here of which, which unit, uh, just the delineation between which unit, in a, in a rough sense. Uh, they're not completely solidified here, but, um, they, they give a good idea of what, um, what these, these units are comprised of. Uh, we're looking at four one-bedrooms and, um, eight two-bedrooms for a total of twelve per floor. To the next one, please, Gene. We do have some proposed renderings. Um, this one here shows, um, on Main Street, how you'd be looking into the parking area. And as you can see there, we are planning on more, uh, square section of the building, um, a metal panel. Um, but for the majority of the building will be, will be, um, brick. Um, with the, like I said before, the mansard roof. Um, any of the dormers on the mansard roof will be that same type of metal paneling that is seen on the, the more modern side of, of the building. This view here is from the corner of Second and Main Street, looking down Second Street. Um, as you can see, it kind of has a cadence as it marches down, down Second Street. Um, slightly European, more modern European look, uh, to the streetscape, something that's not as often employed in this, this area, but something that, that definitely could, could set a, a precedent here.
What's the height of the building?
I believe less than forty-five feet. Uh, to be more specific, I believe it's forty-two.
Yeah, so forty-two.
And how's that compared to the, um, structures on the far end of this view going up Second Street?
On the far side?
Yeah, at the end of this, where the cursor is.
Right, where the, the, I believe there's a, some residences down that way. I, we did do some initial heights of various buildings in the area. I do not believe we have those ones mapped out, uh, the height of those currently.
How, uh, how about across the street on Main Street? The, like, where the barber shop in there? What, are they roughly the same height, forty-eight feet?
I believe we had a, a slide in previous, I know we did an informal, a couple of informal meetings where we did look at those. I believe the highest one was thirty-eight. Uh, I don't want to be tied to that, but I do.
Is there a graphic that you could provide showing the comparative heights of the structures on all sides?
Yeah, yeah, we have, we have some of them already from prior informal presentations. We could certainly get the additional heights of other buildings that you want to see.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, and again, um, what we've tried to do with respect to those buildings that are lower in height is we've tried to push the building closer to Main and Second and away from the six-thing, single-family and, and so on. And I think you've seen that through the, uh, site plan and landscaping side, sides, uh, landscaping plans to just demonstrate the, the separation and, and the, what was taken in terms of the screening and the fencing and so on to, to provide privacy as well, where there is, I think, an existing chain link fence, fence there today.
Right, thank you.
And the last rendering we have shown, um, shows the view looking, um, towards Bain Street, kind of farther down Second Street. Um, and as you can see, it has that same, same sort of cadence that we were aiming for.
And these are examples of the comparative heights would be useful. The blue house on the right, the white structures on the left, and then the structures all the way down straight ahead across Main Street and the structures behind us in this photo.
Certainly.
There is in the fiscal impact study, there are comparisons of not the immediate necessary ones, but other buildings on Main Street is in there.
Be great if we had a graphic to show up.
Yep.
Sure, a graphic potentially showing like a, a longer transect cut through downtown showing, you know, the houses of their heights versus the new buildings' height.
The different azimuths for those cuts?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
That could be something, a, a graphic we could, we could put together architecturally, so.
That'd be very helpful.
I tried to keep it short and sweet. That, I think, I believe that's our last, uh, rendering that we have on our, um, presentation, but.
I have to say, that was one of the most concise, uh, representations through an architectural section, and I have to compliment you.
Oh, thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
You can see folks are getting edgy.
So, why don't we do this? Um, we've asked a bunch of questions, so why don't we take public comment and questions now? And then if board members have questions, you can intersperse them or come back to them. But it's starting to get late, so I've, I know people have been very patient. So, if anyone wants to come up, uh, well, let me do this. Gene, have we gotten any comments online?
We have not.
Okay, great. So, if any members, no one has to, can sure, just move on. Uh, but if anyone wants to come up, why don't we do that now? That would be great. And if you could just go to the podium and introduce yourself, please, and where you live.
Yeah, Lisa Lucigien, I live at forty-two Second Street.
Thank you, Lisa.
And have for thirty-nine years. Um, I think the biggest issue that we all should consider is the size of this, the number of units. And, uh, we're talking about two-thirds of an acre. That's hardly bigger than our lot, you know? If people are gonna have children, there's no place for them to play. The number of cars is gonna be more than they're allowing for because even in a one-bedroom, sometimes people visit you. Uh, two-bedroom, chances are, there's gonna be two vehicles. Um, traffic in town, I think we haven't even gotten close to what it's going to be once Avalon Bay is completed. Avalon Bay Phase Two is coming. Um, the Minicucci development over by the new senior center. Now, without all of that yet, Main Street in the morning, people heading up towards St. Michael's. There is no way you can get onto Main Street from Second Street. It's that busy first thing in the morning. By two-thirty or three o'clock in the afternoon, everybody's going the other way. It, I have literally seen it multiple times, backed up from Sutton Street to Second Street on Main Street. So, people are saying, you know, traffic isn't so bad certain times of the day. Yeah, certain times of the day, but even now, before all these new buildings, new apartments and condos come in, it's becoming a real problem. It's become a problem. Um, and I just think that's too many units for such a small lot or two lots put together. I think it should be reduced. Um, I had to walk from Second Street down to, down Main Street to Sutton yesterday morning, and I counted eight empty storefronts. I have no problem with anyone trying to put more commercial units in town because that's what being in town is about and having commerce. But, um, chances are, it'll be hard to fill. Uh, but the residential units, I think, should be probably cut in half. That's my opinion.
Okay, well, that's what we're here to take. Thank you, Lisa.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Karen Spencer, one fifty-nine Main Street. I am to the left of this, directly, um, abutting this property.
Okay.
So, not to beat the parking to death, cause I know you've talked about that a lot. Um, I would be curious, this, this lot has essentially been empty since COVID with, um, Santander closing because of COVID and then it being sold. So, I would be curious to know if in the parking study, did the utilization take into the fact that many people use that lot now for parking? So, for church, um, for school, for funerals, uh, farmers markets, any type of events, there are many people that currently park there.
Okay. Do you, the utilization study didn't, did you study, did you check the parking spaces in lot? It was just on the street, right? Or was it, did you include spaces in lots?
It was just, uh, it was just on, on, on the street.
Just on the street.
Yeah. But I, I mean, I, I mean, I, I won't speak, someone who lives right next door, but I will say that I've, I've seen at most a couple of spaces that are utilized at certain times. I haven't seen it during the farmer's market or, uh, during sort of the, the holy events at the various churches nearby. But, but beyond that, I, you know, other than people parking there overnight when they shouldn't be, I, I haven't seen a, a whole lot there, but.
Okay, well, what was the, what was it like, um, pre-COVID with the bank?
Um, it was typically, I would say, like, nine to five. You had the bank there, maybe not even a quarter of the parking lot was used. It wasn't very heavy traffic at all.
Okay.
That resulting from the bank or, or using the bank parking lot.
Did you find at that time, like, I know Sunday morning church, some people parked there?
Yes.
They were doing it when Santander was open as well as closed, right?
Yes, yes.
And one of the, one of the things that's, that's sometimes hard for us is that we get snapshots, right? So, we get this parking study, which is a snapshot of right now, but it's not like things are staying the way they are, right? Things are changing. So, we're having pluses with these other apartment that Lisa talked about. We're also having minuses too at the same time, right? The Dunkin' Donuts is leaving, so I don't know what's gonna go in there, but that's a bunch of traffic at different times. Senior centers leaving and going, but something else municipal most likely will come in there. And so, we have a certain amount of knowns and we have a certain amount of unknowns. And, and to an extent, we, we're limited sometimes in the scope of what we can foresee. We try to factor in all of these things, um, but life isn't static and some of the numbers are.
Right.
So, maybe just a comment here. I mean, this is why the argument I was making about doing the study and getting, at least getting data on Sundays, because it feels like there's a pretty, it's a pretty fluid thing that happens on Sundays, especially now, you know, like there's maybe a question mark of whether or not people park there on, 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 on Sundays as well, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, listen, more data is not necessarily bad, but at the same time, like, again, is a commercial place gonna be open on Sunday? Maybe, depends on what it is.
I mean, I think, I think, you know, we're, we're kind of dealing with the broad public policy issue of parking in general, but we're dealing with it through the guise of the specific project. Uh, I'm beginning to come to the conclusion that the specific traffic problem that we challenge that we have related to this property is during that peak overlap period. Uh, that, you know, maybe it's four o'clock or three o'clock, I, I don't, whatever. There's a period of four or five hours, maybe more, where there could be contention in parking. And whatever solution we come up with, we have to come up with the right solution. But I think it's fairly narrow, I mean, yeah.
And sometimes it can be, um, changed based on and adjusted based on what, you know, the market itself changes it, right? So, if people realize that five to eight is going to be a problem, they start coming home at four-thirty or they start parking different places, to an extent. I mean, it doesn't absolve us of our responsibility. But there are changes that occur naturally.
I guess what just I'm saying is that there's a risk not having that data from eight AM, you know, for a normal, you know, eight to five on a Sunday, um, specifically around looking at the data between eight and noon, right? And just, so that's.
But I mean, I, I, I think it's a little bit like, you gotta be careful you don't look at like traffic in the old center, uh, during sheep sharing. Oh, my God, it's crazy, it's insane. But that's like two or three times a year. It's, it's kind of like, you know, St. Michael's had their annual picnic at St. Michael's this year. So, it was crazy that afternoon, but that's once a year. So, I mean, I, I think we got to take this stuff in context a little bit.
Well, we'll leave it to you guys. I mean, we're not gonna leave a commandment of go study Sunday, but you've heard that some people are interested in that twelve, in that four-hour time period, so.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, right, you're right. It's a constant struggle as to, you know, if, if you want to have, bring more life into the downtown area, you need to have some flexibility on parking. Otherwise, you're gonna keep the same downtown that you have in certain areas and it'll never change. We've done countless studies on, on, on the downtown area. We know what's needed there and, and we certainly want to be respectful of, of all the neighbors in the area. But, um, you know, we're, we're fortunate that some of these buildings are starting to, to be rehabbed. And I think it's primarily because of East and West Mill. That's really charged and initiated the, the redevelopment of the area. And so, um, you know, that's again, why you need some sort of flexibility in parking. It's not, you know, it's, we're not looking at restaurant parking. I mean, you, you see St. Michael's Church parking lots. I mean, folks over in Water Street park in there all, all the time. And, uh, and probably across the street too, maybe on Maple Street as well. Uh, so there's always sharing. I mean, if you, if we had to down the road, if we had a large intensive use like a restaurant use, then that's an appropriate situation where we may be able to make an agreement with a, an owner of a parking lot.
Well, and maybe again, something, one of the things we've done in recent years more and more is, uh, whether it's parking or traffic or lighting or noise is, is realize that there are things that we cannot necessarily always anticipate and require studies later on after development to come back. And, and so that's, you know, especially with parking, that's also a possibility here. But let's continue on, if there are other comments. Um, cause we'll, we'll still get into the, in further hearing, we'll get into some of these more specifics.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Father Stepan Baljan. I live one half of my life with my wife and children at thirty-eight Green Hill Ave. And I live the other half of my life with my other wife at St. Gregory Army and Apostolic Church across the street from your proposed development. I thank you for the opportunity to be able to address you today. Um, I, I want to also preface by saying that I am not, certainly not anti-development. Uh, I think it, it would be a great thing, um, to see North Andover as revitalized as possible. Uh, however, I do have several concerns based on what I've heard here this evening. Uh, first of all, I'm, uh, actually quite shocked and dismayed that both the churches, St. Gregory's and St. Michael's, uh, neither of them nor St. Michael's School were included in any discussion in your plan or your presentation. I think that was a big oversight. Um, all the talk about residential versus commercial, uh, and I believe the term was the commercial overlay. Uh, I think that schools and churches operate, uh, in different capacities. Uh, there are different peak times and there are sort of a mixture of residential and commercial. We house our children there and our worshippers there. They're not there at the off-peak hours like at nighttime. So, I think that's something that needs to be taken into consideration. Um, I believe that isolated anecdotes, uh, I drive by once in a while, I'm here at such and such a time on Sunday or whatnot are not sufficient. Um, I'm not trying to tout, toot my own horn, uh, but I am in the, in the general area staring at the property, uh, for many, many hours every day. Uh, and I see the type of, um, the traffic, the demand for parking, um, that is there. It's, it should not be downplayed that it's somehow, uh, a less crowded or congested area. There are constantly cars going by, there are constantly people parking. Uh, there's another business, foster insurance there. Um, and also there is the, uh, Sturbridge Arms was not taken into consideration either. I can tell you that there are many people, is that the name of the other residential place?
I, I guess I'm just not understanding what you mean by fail to take into consideration.
Oh, I'm gonna explain now if I could. Uh, there are many people who come to visit residents there and they park all up and down the street. They park in our lot, we have to ask them to leave. Um, in St. Michael's, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the back row of the St. Michael's parking lot is town parking. Am I correct? That's what I've been told.
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, St. Michael's has two parking lots.
Right, there's the school parking lot.
Maple Street?
Yeah, the, the, the water street, the lower part of their parking lot that abuts Water Street. I was told that that was town parking.
It is not.
Okay, all right, I stand corrected if, if that's the case. Um, currently, we are, uh, under agreement with the management agency of the property. Uh, we were. Uh, we were with, also with Santander when they were the tenants of the property for our parishioners to park their vehicles on Sunday mornings. Uh, and obviously, like Mr. Goldberg said, it has to do with the situation, right? Banks are not open on Sunday, so it, it's convenient. I understand that that's a privilege and an agreement for us and that, uh, if this development is to go through, that we would obviously forfeit that privilege. We would not be able to do that. However, I'm very concerned when I hear that there's going to be an additional requirement of twenty-six on-street parking. And I also would like to note that, um, the area surveyed going all the way to Waverly Road, uh, I don't believe it's feasible that a resident or somebody going to that store is going to be looking for parking on Waverly Road. I wouldn't want my parishioners to be looking for parking by Waverly Road either. And I understand there's demand, higher demand on certain days and certain times. I understand that. However, if we were to take our parishioners who normally park at the current Santander lot and have them now going to look for on-street parking, but I'm understanding that this development will, will also be looking for on-street parking in that same area, the, the, either the residents or the patrons of the commercial operations, I believe that will make for competition, at least for those few hours on Sunday morning. And that's a big concern of ours, voicing my concern on behalf of, of my church and parish. Uh, and lastly, I just want to say, um, uh, looking at the architectural plan and looking at the parking spaces that are underneath, uh, inside the building, I see that they, they seem to be like two parking spaces deep. And I, I don't, I'm, I'm just trying to understand how that works in terms of people being able to get in and get out, and that not causing a problem.
Yeah, so as I understood it, that, that they would be assigned to a, the two of them would be assigned to a unit, so, right? So, it's like, it's like if you and your wife have a driveway, exactly.
Yep, understood.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Come on up, sir.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Dave McGregor. I live at 161 Main Street. I am one of the other abutters of the property.
Yeah.
And I also am dismayed that we were never contacted by the developers about anything at all. And so, that's, that, um, and from what I understand, in one of the initial meetings, they did say that, that we were contacted and that was not true. So, that's my initial introduction to them. Um, I am concerned about the parking. And if those double spaces are indeed for the residents, then that precludes anyone who's going there from using those spots for the commercial purpose, if I'm not mistaken.
As I understood it, there were going to be twelve shared spaces, yeah?
The parking even further.
Correct.
So, that's going to exacerbate the downtown parking, um, along with everything that, um, the pastor said from St. Mike's, um, or, sorry, St. Gregory's, that will just make it that much worse. I do believe that the number of residents is too high for that area. You're talking about, what, twelve units on each floor? So, twenty-four total? So, that's going to be adding to the school system on top of that.
Uh, it's.
Along with all the other residences that are being built all around the community.
So, I mean, with one and two bedrooms, I mean, so, parking, I totally get.
Yep.
Size and scope, I'm not sure, I, I, I.
We are increasing, how many new constructions have gone on in this town?
But this, this one would be.
Just adding to that.
Yeah, so, and exactly, yes, it would be adding to it, but it would be potentially up to maybe five students.
You don't know that.
Yes. We do. I mean, that, I mean, that's what the, I mean, that's what the data says. That's what all the studies would say. You have one and two-bedroom apartments that are going to be ownership, that's, that's very, very few students.
So, fine, okay, so that's, okay.
That's, that's our issue. In terms of how many people there are, again, yes, we've added, but again, it's the, you as a neighbor.
I'm voicing my concerns.
Yes, yes, and then I get it, and I'm, sorry, I'll let you finish, go ahead, go ahead.
So, my other concerns are the landscaping. Uh, they're talking about, what, a six-foot, seven-foot transformer? Um, that's going to be right outside my neighbor's window. I'm guessing that's on a pole, um, which is just, no, I'm not.
No, no, so, go ahead, uh, so, John, I'm going to talk about the transformer, have someone talk about that.
It's a big box, okay.
It's a big box that's near the sidewalk, right?
It's, it's ground matted.
Okay, so that the wires aren't coming off, so going across, okay. So, that, that's, that's better, okay. And then as far as the fence that you're talking about, on top of the embankment, the five-foot embankment, um, how high does that actually come? Does that come above the height of the, our property? Which would, would that have a problem with water runoff? Because it's now being stopped by, um, that retaining wall that's right there with the fence on top? I'm just wondering how high this would actually be looking from our property, um, basically just closing off the entire back property of ours. Or actually, our entire side with them. I'm just, I'd like to see a visual representation, because right now, we don't see that, what the proposed plan is with my house right there, we just see my house. We don't see what that retaining wall would look like in comparison. Is it going to be blocking off the whole side?
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, we can try to get something like that. I mean, I think the idea is that the, the retaining wall was like five feet high and, and then tapering off. And then the fence was six feet on top of it. The purpose, as I understood, was actually to provide screening so that people parking don't shine their lights.
Anything showing that, um, from my side.
Okay.
What that would actually look like. I do like the idea of the fir trees or the cedar trees that they were talking about planting, but is that only on one side or is that going along the whole side? That would actually be a nice thing to have, so I'm not looking at brick walls. Um, so, something to consider perhaps.
Okay, talk about that.
It's just, it's, the one thing, if we could actually go to the other side of that building, so we can take a look, because it, it does not appear as though it fits in, in my estimation of what North Andover looks like. Um, keep going. So, this is basically an office building that my neighbor will now be looking out on, right here. If that is the actual representation versus a clavoured building, um, you know, house building that we have in North Andover, which, this is clearly separate from what the traditional North Andover look is.
I mean, fair in that, I think as John said, it's kind of a transition point. I mean, if you go another, if you go another block.
But you also go another block, it's also a lower building and the top does have the clavoured.
No, so if you go another block towards Sutton Street, we have the taller office, taller office-type buildings. You have Town Hall and then you have the.
But that's, that's further down and that actually is, no, I mean, you've got the, okay, you've got the hardware store right next door, which is more similar to what North Andover used to be. This is a newer structure, yes, I understand what you're saying. I know the Dunkin' Donuts across the way is also brick, but that's not everything within this area. And so, it just, I don't, in my opinion, I think that's ugly. So, I'd just like to voice that as.
Fair enough.
So.
Okay.
I'll just leave that for right now, but, um, I'm not happy with the whole design.
Okay.
Chairman, we're happy to have a discussion with Mr. McGregor about that common boundary and try to, try to find some agreement on that side.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I don't think everyone's going to love every design of a building, but one of the things we do encourage is definitely when we're talking about abutting boundaries, if you're willing to give them your phone number and stuff like that, or email or whatever. Uh, and that goes for any directive abutters to talk about preferences. We can't always guarantee, especially if, if everyone agrees, great. But if one person wants a picket fence and one person wants a wall and one person wants brick, then we, we get stuck.
Can we have a discussion, Sol?
That, we would encourage that. Okay, other questions or comments? Yes? Go, come on up.
Hi, I'm Maureen Spencer, 159 Main Street, where the abutters there. Um, the, I guess my question's about the transformer. It's like, I think you said five by seven is the dimensions of that?
Is that?
I don't know exactly what the dimensions are. Other folks may, may know on our, from the Langen Group, but it's, it's a standard type of transformer that is, uh, is required by, by the utility company. And we could try to get that information for you. And again, it's, it's, it's something that we try to locate in an area that's as least intrusive as possible. But oftentimes, the utility has a mandate as to where it goes.
I was, that was going to be my question. Essentially, it's in our front yard, like on the corner, so is, is there?
I think if we get the dimensions and then you provide a little bit more granularity on the screening, because I understand you want to screen it, but you have to do it with safety concerns in mind. I think if we can see both of those things, it might alleviate some of your concerns, but.
Right, as he has said previously, no, we've never been contacted, which again, would have been nice to have a discussion with that. And then that area too, in the traffic study, I've been there about four years. Within that, is there, that, there's a lot of accidents in that area or near misses, just from us sitting on our front porch, you can, you can see them quite often. And with that large transformer there, in addition to possible accidents, was just a concern.
Correct.
And then I'm just going to hit back on that, the fencing, if we could get more information on that too, because as, from what I'm seeing now, it's about five feet from the side of our home. So, there's going to be retaining wall and a fence, so when we open our windows within five feet, is going to be the fence, like, that's what we're looking out at, would be a fence right there, is that?
So, may I ask, what do you see now? Do you see, look out into the parking lot, is that what?
Correct, yeah, and the building is much further away from where they're building, which is fine.
You probably are closer to the house, or you see the house before you see the old bank building or from your house?
Same fence right there, we're just to the left of this picture.
In the other images, you can see it, it's the, the direct house on Main, we're on, like, facing, on Main Street. And then Mr. McGregor is behind us.
Okay.
I think I have a short slide to do.
That's our front porch right there.
Lower left corner of that is their porch.
Okay.
So, I guess what I'm saying, like, those, so the, our side windows now, typically, you'd have open and lookout. But what's, what I'm understanding is that it's going to be a retaining wall with a fence on top with the, the five feet there, so when you, we'll just look at.
So, my understanding of that, so that green box, I believe, in the lower left-hand corner, Gene, if you can scroll down a little bit, that's the transformer.
Yes.
Yes.
So, that, we're, like, just sitting in the summertime, sitting on the front porch, that intersection coming off of water in Main, there, there's a lot of near misses if and accidents occurring. So, I just, it just seems like a, a dangerous spot. And also, it's, looking out from the front porch, it's, uh.
Does the fence come all the way down behind the transformer or does it stop before it?
No, it stops before, so it only goes to the edge of the, edge of the wall. Um, I will say, just to go back to the transformer, you know, in order to get exact dimensions, we would need a full design, electrical design for this, so we can provide some approximate dimensions from National Grid. So, you know, yeah, typically, you know, they could be, you know, five by seven or seven, six by seven in size. Um, but we see, we try to get some more information, but it is, will be determined when we do final design for the electric loads for the building and everything.
And this is a wooden fence today.
Right, that runs your property, right?
Correct, yes.
So, is that six feet high? Would you say six?
Oh, I'm sorry, the, 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 there's a panel of wooden fence behind our house, but directly right now, if you looked out of our side windows, you would be looking out into the parking lot. There's no fencing there. It's just a grass slope that goes down.
So, talk to them, you know, after you can give them.
I think a discussion would be great.
Just talk to them, because the idea behind the fence.
Is actually for your.
You can appreciate that, yes.
Privacy and for lights not coming in, so, you know, if, if there's something that's preferable, just let them know. I mean, that, I think is, that's something that is pretty easy to accommodate a change, especially at this point, and something that I found that can make a big difference in a project like this for, for a butter. So, definitely talk about that, because we're not married to any of the particular thing on that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, we're happy to have that, that dialogue, as we mentioned previously. And, uh, and in terms of, um, in terms of outreach to abutters, we're certainly happy to have that discussion. I expressly stated at our July and our September meeting, I believe, that we hadn't had discussions with the neighbor and property owners, except for one person who, who appeared, I think, informally at one of the meetings to discuss the landscaping to the rear. But again, we're happy to have those discussions and try to see what we can do.
Melissa, did you ever?
I just want to clarify, so that entrance off of Main Street, it's actually only into, there's no egress coming out of there. It's just going one way.
It's just an entrance, it's one way in.
So, nobody's going to be pulling out onto Main Street.
Yeah, no one's going to be pulling out onto Main Street, it's just in, yeah.
Where's your snow storage area?
Yeah, so right. So, right now, I mean, this, the plan for the snow storage would be to push it into whatever landscape locations that we can until it can be removed within twenty-four hours, so stockpiled and removed within twenty-four hours.
So, I don't expect that to be in the O and M plan. I've asked for that, the fire department has asked for that as well. So, we need that in some type of written form.
You may need a better plan than that.
Yeah.
Not unusual for commercial off-site, so on, and making sure that it's not right identified and located in areas of site distance as well.
Okay. Uh, other questions, comments for tonight? Board members' questions or comments for tonight?
Uh, thank you, everyone, for coming.
Yes, so, um, next steps, Gene.
Well, there's still significant peer review comments being discussed and responded to. Um, I still have to chase the fire department a little bit to get the rest of their comments. I've met with them individually and reviewed the site plan, but he needs to write them up.
Is it worthwhile to have this on the January third or should we go to the seventeenth?
Well, how far do you think you'll get with the peer review responses? I mean, there's a lot of questions here that need to be responded to as well, so.
Yeah, I mean, we had, we had initially thought, a, a presentation by RKG, and the real question is, do you, do you need a presentation from RKG with the, with the fiscal report, given that school committee and, and the assessors have already weighed in?
We have it, so why don't we say for now, no. If anybody wants someone from the, uh, to come in and present on the fiscal review, let us know, but I, I don't.
Yeah, we're happy to do it.
I don't see a reason to.
There are questions.
I'd be interested in another presentation on parking with the additional information.
So, what I, my suggestion would be to come back on the seventeenth, because we have the holidays coming up. That gives you enough time to start answering some of these questions, to start meeting with people and not doing it, you know, Christmas Eve. This gives you a little bit of time to do that. And then if you, you know, if all the neighbors say, hey, we, we'd rather have a three-foot fence or we'd rather have this, then maybe you can start making some adjustments too, if everyone's kind of on the same page. Um, and then you can also get the, kind of the specific, uh, parking granular data that we're looking for, charted, stuff like that, and, and don't have to all work overtime. So, I'd say unless there's, if you want to put it on, I'd say for now, let's, I'd say let's put it on the seventeenth. I, I don't see any reason to, to put it on the third. And, well, we already have a couple of other public hearings that night, so let's do it the seventeenth. Okay, so, this public hearing will be continued until January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Folks, we do, um, we do actually have some additional business that we're still going to do. So, um, definitely feel free to talk outside. If you need to grab anyone's phone number, do that right outside. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. Okay, um, what do we got left?
It's the proposed bylaw amendments.
Bylaw amendments, okay, Gene.
This is just strictly an introductory presentation that, it's that time of year again, so we're going to start seeing requests for bylaw amendments. We have two that I know of as of now, one of which I'm initiating for the inclusionary zoning. At last year, very late in the process, we identified some housekeeping that was needed related to continuing care retirement centers. So, John, as you know, we have an article specific to this type of development, Article thirteen, if I remember in the bylaw, that already accounts for density bonuses and open space bonuses and provides for ten percent additional units if they pay in lieu, I'm sorry, if they contribute ten percent affordable. So, it's kind of like a hybrid approach now. We've, we've put them in the inclusionary zoning, just like any other development, and yet, they already have a bylaw specific to density bonuses and the ability to pay in lieu, which they did initially, um, in oh-seven, I believe. And so, all this does is kind of separates them out from the typical multifamily development and points them back, if they want the bonus, back to the CCRC, but still requires a mandatory five percent, which we don't have today. So, even if they don't want to have a bonus, they still have to provide five percent affordable. If they do want a bonus, they can go up to the ten percent, but they still have to pay for that extra ten percent. They still have to provide either a payment in lieu or they have to be affordable.
Does that mean for CCRC, I mean, because they're, you know, I mean, the high-end one like, like we have is, is very expensive.
Yeah, so the calculation today is two dollars per square foot of building. So, initially, they, um, they, um, these are gonna be rough numbers, but, when they initially constructed, they were within, and they didn't have a payment in lieu, because they were within what was allowed, they came back when they did the cottages, and they added some more units, and for the square foot, starting at square foot one, they had to pay $2 per square foot, and so, all that math added to about 400,000 square feet, and we got 800,000 in payment in lieu.
I imagine it will be payments in lieu rather than-
Well, that's my point, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and they're very likely would do payment in lieu again, I've talked to them, um, and it goes back, like I said, it went back to that very first square foot, it wasn't just the incremental bonus amount, they had to pay $2 per square foot on the entire, in entirety, um, and so, all this does is just point them back to that, however, today, is, like I said, initially, they were within their density limits, and there was no payment in lieu, they'd still have to provide 5% mandatory, and then they can still go up to 10%, but they'd have to give us another 5% in affordable, so that's the approach I took, the other amendment is, if you remember last year's town meeting, we had the rural crafts mixed use overlay district at the same time, and we expressly excluded them from the inclusionary zoning, because of the 40B component that was on the master plan already, and we were already getting, I forget what percent of affordable units, so, we're just deleting that clause that says Article 19, which doesn't exist, because it didn't pass, was excluded, and the only last change, um, is, and Aton had some misunderstanding about this, but we had initially proposed inclusionary zoning to include subdivisions, and as you know, subdivisions are under rules and regs, not necessarily under zoning, and inclusionary zoning is a zone, is zoning by special permit, and Mass Housing talked to Suzanne Egan at the time, and she discussed some case law and whatnot, and so Suzanne had pulled it out, I have since seen it in several bylaws, they include subdivision, and acknowledging that our largest subdivision, I think, last five years, was 11 lots, it was 11, nine, and then seven for the last three subdivisions, um, and so, I've added it back in, we have Newtown Council, she's reviewed it, and she didn't have any concerns with how it's written, so those are the three changes, it, it might go to the Attorney General, and we might hear back from them, and if that's the case, we're back to not including them, so, I just, I think it's worth at least considering it.
Yeah, I, I, I had thought that, in our original discussions, that, I always had thought that subdivisions were included, as long as it was large enough, you know, if it was a 10, you know, if it was gonna be a 10-division subdivision, you'd know that, and if you didn't want to do, fall under the bylaw, then you'd make a 7-division subdivision, you, you have options, but if you wanna make it big enough, you can do the affordable.
And I think the way it would play out is, they come in with a definitive plan, you're under subdivision rules and regs, you have to approve that definitive plan, when they go to try to pull a building permit, if it's more than eight units, they're gonna trip into zoning through the building commissioner, and they'll have to get a special permit for that, so.
Okay, and then the floodplain?
Okay, so the only other one is floodplain, which is, um, essentially, there's a Flood Insurance Act, that we have to stay in sync with, um, the National Flood Insurance Program, and so, they've made some changes to that bylaw, that we have to then incorporate into our bylaw, Amy Maxman is gonna come to the next meeting and kind of explain those in detail, the way it's drafted currently is essentially to, to take the entire bylaw today, just line it out, because there's so many changes, it'll be really hard to kind of merge the two, so just line it out and present a brand-new floodplain, that's consistent with state and federal requirements.
Is there a new map?
Um, I don't know if the maps got updated with this, but the, but the language did, there's all different maps for the floodplain, but we have them, yeah, you wanted to bring them for the town?
Is there some, some representation she can share of, you know, to give a sense of it?
I'll talk to her, it's, the, the floodplain is just throughout the entire town, and so, it's at different levels and different.
Yeah, but the floodplain's mostly localized at the river.
Yeah, certainly down off of Mass Ave.
I had, I was in the floodplain, and I was on-
Yeah, we trip into that one a lot, um, so revised floodplain maps are expected in the summer of 2023, and this has to be adopted by the time that those are, oh, so this is our one shot at May's town meeting, to have them adopted ahead of that.
Okay, uh, discussion related to a butter notification requirements, Peter, do you want to have any more thoughts on that, or?
Well, or, or more solutions?
We're late. Listen, every time we go through this, we get the same response from the butters, nobody told us, they're saying that because they know there's been meetings, I, I, I don't know how many more ti- I mean-
But I don't think that's what he said, he said that they never talked to him.
No, he said two things, they never talked to him, and this, and they, they were never told this was happening.
I, I think he meant by the applicants, because I have the certified mail stamp.
Okay, okay, by the applicant, but my, but my point is that they always, um, have a sense that they're the last to know, I think that our meeting with applicants informally is absolutely well-intended, I think we should stop doing it, unless a butters are notified, and if it's important enough to do it, we'll notify the butters, yeah, I just think it's wrong for us to be having these conversations before there's been some form of notification, and my understanding is, there are some technical challenges with how we do it, who does it, is it repeated, I, I understand there's those challenges, it's, if it's important enough for us to meet in advance with applicants, and I think it is well-intended, then we should notify.
I think that's fair, but I also think in some cases, it's a canard that people have, they're, they're just using it because they don't like what's going on, and they knew about it, they just didn't pay attention to it.
I agree that there is unquestionably some of that, John, but, there's still, there's still the issue of our due, our due diligence-
That's fair.
And I, I know we all take seriously that, you know, we're representing the interests of the town beyond us, and I, I hate having this conversation, because I think I'm causing all sorts of problems, perhaps, for Gene, in how this might be done, by whom, at what expense, and I, I don't wanna cause those problems, but-
My concern is, I raised it last time, where are the parameters, they came in for an insubstantial change tonight, had you approved that, the butters weren't noticed, you guys opted, they, they, to call for modification, the bond release that we did for a crosspoint, again, because they reached out to me, I was able to tell the butter property that they requested their bond release, at the A and R plan, you, this is the first time I've ever had a butters.
Gene, it's a very good question, what are the criteria?
And, and so, the notice then adds time.
Although, although I would say this, how many, how many pre-meetings did we have with this applicant, how, when, when did we first start meeting, back in June?
We had two, but I don't remember what month it was.
And there were very substantial discussions about design ideas, so, I think there's a, there's a category which is obvious, that, in my mind, we should be notifying, and then, I think there's probably a category that's just as obvious, that it's de minimis, and then there's a gray area, and it's a very good question.
Yeah, I think there's, we're at the point where the way we're communicating has changed so much, and there could be a benefit, I think it's, over-communication as much as possible is important, one of the key things I've gotten out of these different meetings is, people talking about, yeah, this makes sense, but they just weren't aware of a lot of these processes, and, and, and what goes forth, so the sooner people can know about it, and know that they need to start diving into things to understand them, I think that's really important.
So, let me say two things, one, I agree that I think we, I think I know, would know, like, as the chair, I think I would know which ones you're talking about, right, so the ones that have come up, like, had, that we've had discussion items beforehand, this, uh, Avalon, I think, came, might have come, or, um, certainly Royal Crafts, right?
For two years.
Right, so I think, I think it's the discussion item that we know is going to lead to a special permit, or a zoning change, or something significant, it's not an A and R, it's not a, it's not something that's processed, right, A and R is processed, bond release is processed, insubstantial change, if we deem it insubstantial, then it really isn't important, because we deemed it insubstantial, uh, and if it wasn't important enough to deem not insubstantial, then we have a public hearing, so, I think I know what they are, and I think it could be really the chairs, whoever the chair is, obviously, it doesn't have to be me forever, which would be nice, um, kind of prerogative to make that kind of determination, sometimes the only problem is, we don't have that much notice, right, I, I don't, we don't always know, um, but we can, if it's, if it's a discussion, and we can tell them, they'll come back in two weeks, or whatever, the bigger question I'd have is, what do we send? Do we send just a copy of the agenda, because when we send a, when it's gonna be a, a public hearing, there's language that we send, that it's going to be this, and this is the things that are going to happen, what would we actually send, would it simply just be a letter saying, on such and such a date, this item is going to be discussed, and, um, we're notifying you because you're a butter, and that's it?
I think that's it.
Okay, because I think we have to be very careful in what we say and how we say it.
Yeah, I think it's being really brief, and then tell people where to go to get more information, go, go, you know, call Town Hall, call the planning department, go to the website, something, to them say, go do this, to get the rest of the information.
Okay, so, um, so I think then it would just be up to Gene and I to, if we flag, if we see something, or if someone comes with, with the request, just to discuss it, and then we can figure out how to go about it.
You know, over the years, there've, on occasion, been discussions about some sort of board procedure guidelines, um, I like what you've just said, and I'm fine with that, but, we should maybe consider whether or not this gets noted in board procedure guidelines somewhere, that planning director and chairman will assess, you know, this informal notification process, depending on these criteria, but I don't wanna create more work either.
I mean, it's not bad, you have to say something, wait, I mean, to amend our rules and regulations, um, and to, and to say that we encourage, um, applicants for significant projects to come and discuss it with the board ahead of time, but in doing so, we want to maintain as much transparency as possible, so let us know, so that we can notify as appropriate, I think, I think we could come up with something, but I think it really is going to be the unusual situation, though, maybe once a year, once every two years, that something like this would come up.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, can we get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from December 6th?
So moved.
Can we get a second?
So good.
All in favor, Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Kelly?
Do I approve them, even though I wasn't there, I did listen to the meeting.
Then you may.
I approve, yeah.
And I vote yes, anything before we adjourn?
Uh, the 400 Great Lawn Road group is meeting, uh, what, every two weeks, and, uh, we've had one site visit, and we have another one coming up Friday.
Fantastic, looks like our January 3rd is gonna be busy.
Yep, assuming they all, uh, get through the pair, the first response.
Sure, yeah, okay, uh, anything else of substance, do we know if, anything to be filed, or?
No.
Come up, okay, good, okay.
Is someone gonna follow up with the DPW director on the Bonnie Lane thing, Gene, are you following up on that?
She's gonna talk to the-
I'm gonna talk to Tiffany to see if she can do some, in my opinion, if, if she does a few tests, and everything shows-
I don't know if that periodic stream is on her list of testing, that's the question.
That's what I have to talk to her about, but all I'm saying is, if she does six tests, and it's all the same data, and it compares similar to all her other testing, then she doesn't have to add it to her thing, it's just a snapshot to make sure.
Great, okay, can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
All in favor, Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Peter?
Aye.
Kelly?
Yeah.
Yes.
Those mix of yeah, then aye, sorry.
Ayes.
It's 10 o'clock.
All right, thank you, everybody, for a great year, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year, all of that.